Second, this is recording right now.
Hey, yay, all right. All right, we will call to order the Los Leos Community Services District Regular Meeting April 9 at 6:03 PM. And start with the roll call.
Said 6:03, sorry.
Yes, 6:03.
Roll call, President Kennedy.
Here.
Vice President Palmer.
Here.
Director Farron.
Here.
Director Parks.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
All right, if we can get everybody to stand and we will do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, for which he in justice for all. Right, thank you everyone for coming out this evening. And all right, we'll go up next item on the agenda is public comment. If anyone would like to address the board about something not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Michelle?
After having made the opportunity to speak, I was Michelle Weaver, and I just wanted to highlight Catherine Roar's letter that she submitted to LAFCO, the LAFCO Commission meeting last week, three page letter, and it's on the, on the commission's websites of the public record. And I liked that they, the commission, the LAFCO commission really addressed her concerns about people who live on the outskirts of the district that do not contribute to the contamination of the water and will not benefit from a sewer. How is it fair that they should have to pay for another two years of assessments for more studies? Or have to pay for a sewer system for the entire town? And the idea is, we should be going back to the original plan, which was the phased approach was starting with the downtown floor. So I hope that, and you know Supervisor Parkman had just mentioned in writing that Los Olivos has become the premier visitor service center for people. And St. Mark's now is, she didn't say this, but St. Mark's public restrooms, if you can imagine, they're advertised on TripAdvisor as the premier restroom to go to when you go to Los Olivos. So I don't know if the water is, is how their subject is handling the public, who are trying to avoid the, the outhouses in downtown Los Olivos. But I have a feeling that if they were to have to close those restrooms, that, that might help contribute, help the water supply as well. So I hope that you can, you can still consider a local solution, the original resolution 1904, starting with the commercial downtown core, keep it small and prevent road busts off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Wish, again, anything not on the agenda? Anyone online? Yes. If you don't mind just for, just state your name so that you just know who you are. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Gott, and board members, I just want to talk to you about getting people to the meeting. Now, obviously, we have three times the number of people here today in the room than we did at the last meeting. So that's great, but these people don't represent, you know, 391 parcels and people on Zoom do not represent 391 parcels. We need a better way than sending, you know, an email to a group of 50 people or an email to a group of 25. I don't know how many people Guy has on his list to advertise any of these meetings. But more importantly, we have a workshop coming up. And we have a workshop where you're going to not mail to people to advertise to people that are not online, which a lot of our seniors are not online. And they are not getting any of the information that you guys want them to get about the workshop. And putting a tiny little, you know, agenda that is overwhelmed by all of the clutter at the post office is not getting people to the workshop. So I really recommend that you guys mail physical postcards letting people know about the workshop next month and urging them to come. More importantly, I think that, you know, maybe some better outreach in terms of not having just one meeting on a Wednesday. You are missing a lot of people that have, have commitments with their kids. People are not coming back until maybe six o'clock at night because they left at five from their job in Santa Barbara. So I really think you guys need to move the meetings maybe to a Saturday. That would really help, I think, bring in more people.
Thank you.
One online Catherine.
Okay. Hi, thank you Catherine Roar. I, I just, I, I think that this is not an agendized item. So if I'm wrong, just correct me, but I, I think that the LAFCO extension is perhaps an informational item, and so there's no public comment on that. And I just wanted to mention, I got to watch the recording of that meeting and it was just awesome. It was one of the, the better, more informative LAFCO meetings I've seen and the commissioners were really engaged. And I just wanted to note, and I, I think, I know President Kennedy, you were there and Mr. Savage was there. But there were comments from some of those commissioners talking about, I just really thought this was important. They were saying, you know, we could trust you all, you five, a great deal to act in this community's best interest. But we're really just one election cycle away from potentially the board changing hands and, and very easily being under the control of people who are much more pro-development and could, and could engage in decision-making that would depart from sort of your more community-based thinking. And so we know that that does happen. It's happened in other communities and, and it is, it is something of concern. Just rely, not that I don't rely on your good decision-making, but I don't think that that's a long-term solution. I think there has to be a better, some better guardrails in place to ensure that the community's interests are protected. And then the other thing they had talked about was, you know, once you build a system like, or, or join in charge, treatment plant, like, like solving or build a larger treatment facility here that you ultimately, at that point, you don't have local control anymore. In fact, the state regulates discharges, right? And so they can then change the requirements, require upgrades, expansion, different levels of treatment. And the community is going to be on the hook for those. So we, those are costs we can't even anticipate, but we can reasonably expect that they would be coming. And so I just wanted to share that because I thought it, it, you know, was probably of interest to others as well. So thank you for your, all you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, great. All right, thank you all very much. We will go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Information.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Oh, it was, okay, yeah, general manager district report.
Yeah, so as you just mentioned, we did go to LAFCO on, boy, that feels like it was just yesterday. And that's important for us because one of the requests at LAFCO was a two-year extension for us to take, to have two more years to get to 218. LAFCO has approved that or did approve that at the last meeting. I will be posting as soon as I get it from LAFCO, their official kind of document that says, yes, it's approved. So that basically means we have two years to get to 218. And as was noted by a couple of the commenters, you know, I do think that if you haven't watched that section of LAFCO's last meetings, it's, it's worthwhile. It was a good conversation. So yeah, other than that, I think everything else that we're going to talk about is elsewhere on the agenda.
Great, all right, thank you. Okay, now we're onto the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
It's been for.
If I may real quick, before we get to a motion. Just wanted to note, as is noted in the, the agenda, the invoices that are in this particular agenda, again, we did not have a quorum. So they don't come with any sort of recommendation from a finance subcommittee. We'll be talking about that as part of a later item. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Had car trouble getting it before I got home, so I'm a little fast. Um, anyway, I'm sorry, public comment on the consent agenda. Anyone like to make a comment about online guy? Do we have anyone?
Not online.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To approve the consent agenda.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Right. Approved. Okay, I need to breath here for a minute. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the 30% design of a force main from southern portion of the district to connection port near the northern edge, the Sunnyfield Park to the city of Solvay.
Perry Portress here.
Okay, thank you. We have Kerry Portress from StanTech here. Thank you.
She's going to do the presentation. Why wouldn't it read?
Yeah.
If that loads, let's hope that loads. Hooray, look at that, one thing went right. So, bring it away.
Sure, so I'm Kerry Portress of StanTech. I was hired to do the 30% design.
Let me grab this.
Yeah.
And move it a little closer to you. I think you see the other way around.
I didn't understand it for the work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We're sure that the folks online can hear you. Sorry for any ruffling in the. There we go.
Thanks, okay.
So I was hired to do the 30% design for the force main from the end of the Los Olivos Community Services District down to Sunnyfield Park where it would connect to the city of Solvay. So the next slide. So agenda, I'm just going to go over the quick project overview. We're going to talk about the wastewater lift stations a little bit. Talk about the force main alignment, the bridge crossings, the point of connection down to the city of Solvay. Some budgetary costs and then the next steps that we're looking into. So project overview, I know it's really hard to see, but basically at the very end, very bottom tip of the Community Services District where Alamo-Pintado Road meets Santa Barbara Avenue. That's where the force main starts. There's two lift stations that we're proposing. One on that corner of Santa Barbara Avenue and Alamo-Pintado and the other one at Grand Avenue on the other side of the creek. So we're proposing two lift stations, about 1,800 linear feet of sewer force main piping along Alamo-Pintado Road on the edge of the road within one of the travel lanes, the northbound travel lane, and then multiple bridge crossings where we would connect on the downstream side of the bridge. So we're not going to be directional drilling underneath the creek. We're going to be connecting to the bridge, which we've got some preliminary acceptance from the county that we can go with that concept. And then the wastewater would be treated by the city of Solvay for this, for this concept. Next slide. So the Santa Barbara lift station is the bigger lift station. It's on the corner of Santa Barbara Avenue in Alamo-Pintado. There's quite a few utilities in this particular area. So we're proposing to push back the, the lift station behind, there's a water main that crosses this little area and behind the overhead wires so that a, a portion of the lift station would be within the right-of-way and then a portion would be within the private property. So that private property portion would need an easement from the property owner. There would be a standby diesel generator that would be on trailer mounted so that it could be moved if needed. But it would be permanently located at this location. There would be a building to protect the, the generator. This whole area would be fenced. There'd be a driveway so you can enter from both sides of the roadway and that would also allow for one or two trucks to park. There'd be two 10,000 gallon wet wells. One is where the two pumps are located. So it's a duplex system. One pump would handle majority. The second pump would turn on if you start getting higher flows. And then the second wet well would be for additional storage. We were asked to look into that just to help buffer the flows down to solving. There would be a valve vault that would be below ground that would have the, the valve connections from the two different pumps up to combine into one outlet to run down to the force main down Alamo-Pintado. So the picture up on the top left is the layout of that area. And that was used to be able to help put together the costs that we need to figure out the cost for this particular lift station. And then the section view on the right is just some basic concepts of some levels that would be needed so we can figure out the depth of the wet well, also to figure out the costs. The peak discharge for this lift station is about 334 gallons per minute. And like I said, this would require an easement for a portion of the area. So next slide. So the Grand Avenue's lift station is a lot smaller. So this particular lift station, we added to, after the 30% design that was for the gravity collection system, we started looking at the depth of the gravity main that would go underneath the creek and it started to get really, really deep. And we felt like maybe it's a better situation to look into the cost of looking at this lift station so that we can have a, the force main from this lift station that collects on the east side of the community, have a force main across the bridge and over to the, to the Santa Barbara main lift station. So this lift station would be needed and is suggested if you use a gravity flow collection system on the, on the east side. This lift station could be removed if you end up having a regen step force main system on the east side of the community, then you would not need this lift station. But we sized this lift station for the east side of flow. It's a little bit smaller diameter. So the previous one was 12 feet. This is an eight foot diameter, still a duplex system. It would be all within the right-of-way, all below ground but fenced. The electricity we would be served from the other lift station, from the Santa Barbara lift station over to this one and as well as the backup generator source. So there would be no generator here at this location. This is a much smaller footprint and it's all within the right-of-way. Sorry, I'm like trying to read my notes and there's, we allocated for a parking space basically in this area, but it's, it's all within the kind of like driveway area in front of the fence, all within the right-of-way. It would not impact the existing monitoring well that was there that was drilled. I don't know exactly when that was, a few months, few years ago. So we use that information to understand the area and the, the right-of-way lines that we were able to put in for this particular lift station. So next slide. So the alignment of the force main would be basically in the northbound lane within a, a couple of feet of the edge of pavement. We looked at just keeping it within the pavement at this particular time. It is a higher cost to have it within pavement and to replace it, but we wanted to make sure that we're not interfering with any utilities. There is a water main and there's a couple storm drain crossings that we looked at and and that's why we ended up choosing this particular location because the water main is in the southbound lane along Alamo-Pintado. It's about 18,000 linear feet. And it's coming from the Santa Barbara lift station. There would be traffic control that would be needed during the construction for this particular line. And our cost estimate assumes that it'd be an open cut, an open cut trench. So trenching down the road with about four feet of cover so that any crossings that we have for any water laterals or any other utilities, we would be below those. And you could look into an option for directional drilling, although our cost estimate is based on open cut trench. The directional drilling may or may not save costs. It depends on the driller. It depends on the, the soil type. But typically we estimated 1,000 linear feet could be constructed in a day. So with directional drilling, they still have to do multiple bore pits. You need an entry pit and an exit pit. You'd still have to do potholes for any utility crossing. So there's still impacts to the roadway when you do directional drilling, but it is a little bit less impacts. But it's unclear if it would save you any particular money. And I think, I think I hit all the points. Next slide. So for the bridge crossings, there's three bridges that we're going to be crossing. We looked at putting the pipe on the downstream side of the bridge to act as protection for the pipeline. And we were able to see that there was room and space to be able to do that on one of the particular bridges on the bottom left-hand corner. Picture, there was actually already a pipe hanger there with some other utilities. So it looked like a, a, a good spot that we, there would be space to add another one. So we took that into account in terms of our costs that you would be able to reduce some costs by being able to connect to the bridge. So next slide. So the point of connection is basically across the street in the very southern tip of the park. There is an existing manhole structure for the city of Solvay. And we would be connecting into that, into that existing manhole. So the existing manhole bottom would need to be reformed to add another pipe and allow for that flow to be coming in. And I think that's, yeah, it's minimal disruption to that, to that system. And we would just be connecting at their end of the line manhole. Next slide. So for the budgetary costs, we factored in mobilization and demobilization for the, for the contractor, factored in the traffic control that would be needed for the long distance of that pipeline. We factored in the, the four inch pipeline for the, for the bridge crossings or for one of the bridge crossings to go from Grand Avenue Lift Station to the Santa Barbara Lift Station. The four inch PVC main for that particular one, for that short run. And then for the, we have six inch diameter casing for some bridge crossings and we have a six inch diameter HDPE DR21 pipe that we've factored in for the, the force main pipeline. We felt HDPE would give you the flexibility that you could do directional drilling or open cut. HDPE is a fused pipeline, so it makes it a little harder for people to just cut into it and make their own connection. It's a great piece of pipe because it, it allows you to make changes in direction really easily. It has a really tight radius. So you have, especially for the changes to go from the roadway over to the bridge, it allows for that flexibility. So that's why we chose the HDPE. And then we have the costs for the two different lift stations on here as well as the connection to the manhole. So that's the overall cost that we're looking at. And this was just a 30% design. Barely read that right now. About 9.7 million. So the, the force main is about 7 million of that cost. The Santa Barbara Lift Station, thank you. The Santa Barbara Lift Station is about a million. The Grand Avenue Lift Station, we estimate at 500,000. So total for 9.7 million. And next slide, so.
The full cost of the full cost.
That's the full construction cost. So even, it's based on a 30% design. So there's contingency in there and it's basically the, it's a very conservative cost. But it's for the full construction that would be needed.
Does that follow the comment, everyone?
Yeah, just a couple more points that I wanted to point out. So the Grand Avenue Lift Station, it really depends on what your collection system that you choose. So that would be kind of the next step of, of hey, choosing the overall collection system and then you can kind of make some choices on what you want to do for this, for the lift station, if you can remove the Grand Avenue Lift Station. And then negotiations with the city of Solvay. This design and all the studies that were done for the city of Solvay anticipate that the city of Solvay has completed their capital improvement projects. That's the only way that they would be able to accept the Los Olivos Community System or Services District wastewater flow. So that's a very big assumption. And obviously you need community approval in order to move forward, to be able to move forward with the final design. So this was just a 30% design concept so that you can get a ballpark of the costs, get a ballpark of what is included in, in this particular part of the, part of the work. That's it.
All right, we'll go ahead and take public comment first. Just want to remind everybody, it's public comment, not a discussion. However, come to the main meeting because you'll have plenty of opportunity to ask questions and have a more interactive discussion. So in that, with that, is there anyone that, any public comment on this agenda item?
So we can't ask?
Well, you, well, you can, but we're not going to. We'll take the gentleman in the front here, please. He, just let us know your name, please.
That is P D, not solving. Guy has assured me that the pipe, if this option is chosen, send the wastewater of Solvay. The design technically will inhibit connections along the way, like about the belt connecting to the pipe. The only thing I heard was the material of the pipe. So my question is, is the design that we've just seen and the costs associated, but does that include some features that would prevent people from connecting between the two?
Thank you. Anyone else public comment?
Hi, my name is Anna Gott. So my question that I think that some people are just not even thinking about is what happens when we connect or if we connect to Solvay? Does this board dissolve? And if that's the case, then that means that Solvay is going to be actually controlling the development along the route because there will be no one to oversee any, anyone saying, oh, no, you are not allowed to use this line in, that is, was originally supposed to be only between Los Olivos and Solvay, but now could be used for Ballard. You guys are not actually having a discussion, you know, and then allowing public comment. You know, that's, that's how I see most boards actually run. With the city of Santa Barbara, which I attend hundreds of those meetings. And they always have, the city council have discussions and questions and answers because then that informs the public on, you know, some information. And they can be a little bit more succinct when they are writing their own public comment or asking you to ask another question. So the other thing that was brought up is that, yeah, Solvay has to have all of its public improvements completed before we actually could start. So this could drag on even longer. And I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but we're now having this worldwide issue with tariffs. So where does all of our material come from? And are we going to be faced with an extra 10% or 20% or 15% in costs? Because our material comes from overseas or some specific material comes from overseas and we're trying to put in, you know, a, a system and we can't even figure out which part is coming from where. And at the end of the day, we try to actually order things and we're going to have to order things and it's going to be another 20%. So I think that we need to really figure out where everything is coming from as well because that is going to play a large part in costs that we are going to see at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Sam?
Sam, I received Los Olivos Cafe. Been at this for about eight years since Los Olivos CSD has come together. I think there's always a thousand different reasons why we shouldn't do it. And we've got many more we, more committees, more, you know, looking at, you know, well, water and how polluted it is and costs and overruns. And it seems like if we do a, a system, a treatment system in Los Olivos, it's going to cost about 450 million dollars to do. And it seems like we just run a pipe down to Solvay. It's going to be about 40% of that cost. I think it seems like a really good way to go. After eight years, I would just say, please move it forward. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? All right, how about on? All right, how about online?
Catherine, the worst hand is up. I don't know if it's still up from before or if it's up.
It's newly up.
Okay.
Um, so uh I, I do want to respond to that idea that um that running to solving is, is a great bargain. The, the ten million dollars she just quoted you was merely for the pipe uh and the lift stations to get it there. That did not include the collection. It doesn't include anything. We have to pay for O N M. So let's not get too excited about that quite yet until we get some more numbers in. Um, and on the, the couple of people raised the issue of the um the whether other people can tap into the line going down Alamo Pantato. It's huge. Um, it, it really matters and we've heard some assurances from Guy and I've seen that there are legal bills reflecting that um council for the district has done research on the issue, but we have not heard a legal opinion confirming that there is any way to block people from tapping into that line because that is sprawl with a capital S. So we need to get an answer to that um as part of the decision making. And then I just quickly, I noted the Stan Tech report appears to say that it was just for, it would only be zones one and two, which are just the businesses and a handful of very small lots right around it. So less than a hurt third of the district. I think that's what it said. If that's what it said, then we need to think about why two thirds of the district are paying for less than one third of the district to get a sewer system. Um, and finally, I just that picture that you showed in your presentation there. I don't know if you realize that's the gateway, that's the entryway to our community, those beautiful trees over a historic bridge. And so we're talking about tearing out all that greenery and replacing it with what? I'd really like to see a picture of what these fenced in pump stations are going to look like to welcome visitors as they drive in to Los Salivos. I think that warrants a little bit of thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, anyone else on?
No, it's online.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for comment um and questions. Who, anyone like to start? Go ahead. Director Faram, lead us off.
Well, um, first of all, uh, thank you, Carrie, for, for completing this uh this design. Um, but you know, uh we, we really won't know the true cost of this until we get more detailed design and then maybe even a uh uh, an opinion from a, from a contractor. And I appreciate uh Stan Tech's position. The, the sign engineer never wants to be the little bitter. Um, and um uh, Mr. Army, he used to be on our board, uh builds systems like this and, and I ran into him and he had looked at it. And um uh, his opinion was that, you know, as of right now, the system would come in less than, than what the, the design estimate is. And at a thirty percent design, it, it could, it could be more or less, but um I think uh, I think the number that we're looking at, you know, maybe would be the upper end of the hope for that, more work to do on, on that. Another thing that I think is interesting too is on uh, it being an HDP pipe. Carrie, what, what would you estimate the life expectancy of that? I know when we've done storm drains, you know, it can be fifty to a hundred years.
Usually HDP is a hundred years. It matches PVC. So it's, it's a long lasting.
Yeah, so uh, you know, a watertight fused uh pipe, you know, a hundred year. I, that, that was encouraging. Uh, and the ability to do the directional drilling, which Mr. Army um thought would be um a pretty appealing approach as we get, as we get more in the plan. I did want to address um a couple of comments about the connection. There's, there's a lot more discussion has to be had on this and um I, I don't think it's been completely um addressed or finalized, but I think this board has talked about this awful lot throughout, throughout the time and I, I, when you have a pressure pipeline, the idea that someone's just going to come tap into it is um is problematic in several ways. First of all, if you're going to tap into a line, you're going to have to pay for it. You're going to have to pay. The city of solving is what's going to be treating the solve, that, that, this treatment. So um, I don't know how that would work. Um, Spicardi's got a water line. Do anybody just go tap in and take water? Uh, would they be in trouble if they did that? Yeah, yeah, I would think so. Um, and then not to mention, I think we had discussion that, that the pipe is, would be owned by, by this district. District wouldn't go away. We still have to pay our bills, collect our um, you know, collect the cost for treatment and maintenance and, and all of that. So uh, I think uh, I think we have to do more work on that, but, but clearly um I think there's a, an awful lot of uh arguments that you just can't go type. And not to mention our design and we'll have to look at that. When you have a, a, a pipeline that's that, that doesn't have room or capacity, you can't just, you just can't stuff more. And so looking at doing, doing that. And then I think um again, when we talk about uh, I mentioned this before. When you look at the uh, the problems of citing a local system. And you start talking about where you want that to go. Want to go on Mr. Herthell's property? He's told us no. Want to put on the God property? We're told no. You want to go over here? We're told no. Want to go over there? We're told no. And so that's going to be an issue wherever, wherever we go. And um, and I understand, I, I, I do understand that. And I think that um solving having an existing system uh, you know, addresses a lot of that. Uh, and, and finally, uh, over the last couple of years, I've been talking to various other districts and professionals. And everyone has said, you don't want to own a wastewater treatment plant. I think we talked about this. If you cannot own a wastewater treatment plant, you should not own one. And solving owns one. They've already been running it. And so there's a lot of advantages that way. So I think you could see where I, I'm leaning. It'll be just one director. I think, I think I'll stop there in a minute.
Thank you. Georgia Parks?
Yeah, I mean, I think that connecting to solving seems like a, a good solution. Just, I mean, thank you, Kerry, for, for doing the study. So, I mean, at least we have numbers to look at. I mean, at least it gives us some ballpark. Okay, if, I mean, it's a long ways. That's a problem. Um, if it wasn't so far, it'd be a lot easier pump station wise, piping wise and all that. And, but it's nice to have a number to at least be able to put it in what we're, we're looking at all the costs associated with what we want to do. Um, and, you know, like Tom says, citing the, of, of a treatment plant locally um is difficult on the fact that, yeah, nobody wants it near them. Um, but I, I, I'm hoping that we can get more information with Dunn. And I, I, I know that they're interested in doing an affluent system at some point. And hopefully in the shorter term rather than the longer term. Um, and if some cooperative could be formed, uh, that's a lot closer. And I think that the, you know, the transport, whether it was affluent or gravity would be um quite a bit cheaper. And I think that's just something we still need to consider as we go forward. Um, we haven't decided on a collection system yet. And just keep going forward and just the more information, the more costs we have, we can put in all these different formulas and then figure out what is the cost difference, whether you go affluent versus gravity and local versus solving. Um, and at least then when we come to the public, we'll have um they'll have a much greater understanding of really what we're talking ten million dollars difference, fifteen million dollar difference. And then what does that translate into each individual parcel? Because I think that's what it really is going to boil down to.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so just uh one specific question on what you, uh, what Stan Tech provided and thank you, Carrie. Um, and it tees off of what Catherine said actually is a I realize this is thirty percent, but seeing some sort of landscape design or accommodation for those two corners um I think is important. So just as we move forward, if, if we choose to go there, frankly, for any lift station or any equipment that's going to be located there because likely something will be located there, whether it's a local or a, or a solving solution. Um, and then I, you know, I'm reserving more comment until we have the community workshop next month, but I will just say on the, the local control issue, that's why we formed the district in the first place was to have self-determination over how we solve this problem. And if we choose the solving option, it's still a proprietary line that belongs to the district. So it's not a Sanino CSD line. It's not a city of solving line. It's not a county of Santa Barbara line. It's a Los Lebo CSD line. So um that means we have jurisdiction over what happens and who connects and who doesn't connect or if anyone connects. So I think maybe at the workshop, Guy, we'll probably cover this, but having people understand or addressing that what it means legally, what's, what's possible, what's not possible would be, would be a helpful conversation to have. But other than that, I think, again, from a thirty percent standpoint, this gives us a a, a plan and an order of magnitude cost estimate to work with. So thank you. That's what I've got.
Yeah, just, just not to lose that thought. Thank you, Director Palmer. Um, maybe Mr. Savage, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm pretty sure he knows. Um, Guy Sanines has a line that goes to solving. Do they own that line? Do they own it all the way to the pump station that goes under the river?
Yeah.
Is anybody tied in between just there and my comment?
Damn.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is good. This approach is common, you know, where this is nothing new. Thank you.
Well, it's new for this community. Right, that's why.
I won't reiterate what everybody else said because it's right down along. I've got notes here and all, everything that I was going to say has been said, except for the fact that the concerns that each review have expressed, we have. We are looking for the answers to those concerns that's going to best suit this community, to best serve this community. Uh, I think the comments about landscaping around the, wherever the pump stations are top notch. It's, we, we need, we don't want it to look industrial. We want it to look like a community. And there's already plants in some of those. So I think that's something that's it's a detail, but the devil's in the details. Tom just commented about the sending as uh T S D lines. And yeah, that you, you can't just tap into their lines. They own all the way to their connection and solving owns everything past that. So we're looking and thinking and planning the same things that you're thinking about. And the workshop's going to be able to bring in a lot. Um, a lot of things and going back to an earlier comment, there's something going out that's going to go out in the mail for the workshop. That's going to be in the mail for everybody. So, you know, we're, we're on the same page. We're, we're talking the same language. We just can't move as fast as we'd like to. Uh, it's a process. And because it's a process, it takes time. We want to get it right. And when we come, when it comes to a two A team vote, we are going to have it to the point where it's a plan. You're going to know what it is and this is what it's going to take. And that's what you're going to decide. It's not going to be a, a multiple choice. It'll be a specific answer. So, if that helps.
If I could just piggyback, one thought I have on that is there'll be a project description that we land on to move forward with as far as design and funding and both. But we're also going to have to study alternatives in the environment document, which could include Dunn, which will include whatever we don't choose. If we choose solving, it's going to include a local option. If we choose a local option, it's going to include solving option. So there will be additional study of, of those options as far as, as part of the environment.
And to follow back up on the, part of the thing with this connection to solving is the negotiation with solving. To coin someone else's phrase and not get fumbled for, it's the art of the deal. I've been involved in multiple negotiations and you start out with an objective. And somewhere between that and what their objective is, is your, is your compromised negotiated solution. We want to get the best for us. They want to get the best for solving and we're going to find that happy medium. If we go there and that's part of the deal, that's part of finding out what we're going to do.
Thank you.
I have one last question for Carrie. Carrie, I, I, I should have asked you this so you could maybe be prepared that maybe you know off, off the top of your head. So our lift station, we're actually lifting downhill.
Yes.
Um, so that's, um, would the pump station have to be at least larger in capacity and lift if we were to say go up to Don, go back up into town or go, go north of town? Do we get a benefit on the lift that we're, that we're going downhill? Is it about a wash? Um, does a friction pipe in the pipe um balance it out? So no matter where we go, we're looking at a lift station about that size?
Yeah, we did look at that. Um, the friction in the pipe is governing at this point. Um, you might be able to use an exact same size pumps, whichever direction that you go. Um, the head might change a little bit, but we had some flexibility in.
So that lift station more or less.
Size would not change.
Unless we went really far uphill. But thank you.
I actually have a question for you, Carrie. I, um, maybe you can just help me through it. This was in the section about the flow equalization storage. So it sounded like based because of the size that we would hold for six hours and a maximum and then send. Can, as you said, I found this, that section a little confusing. Yeah.
That was our original target was to look at sending the flow during the low flow periods that's all made now.
Right.
The problem that we found was that it wasn't long enough to handle the flow from Los Lejos to be able to do that. So then we looked at um what could be flow during that time. And it was just if we only had a flow for six hours and then stored for the rest of the time, um, it was too large for their lift stations to handle. So then we had to look at a longer duration, smaller flow, and that seemed to work a little better. So that the other report, I don't remember who did the modeling stuff, looked at the, of the lower flow and we are able to do that. Solving still has to do their CIPs regardless. It has to make some changes to some of their types that already have problems even before Los Lejos would give them anything they already have. So they have to fix those problems. And when they fix those problems, that would also allow for our people's to be met. But yeah, we, we're not able to just off during actual time. We're going to be helping for a longer duration. And we didn't want to limit the community, but we did add an additional um what well storage to allow for more flexibility. And that's pretty common in, in the stations that are serving a, a community of this size is to have that additional storage.
Okay, is that my, my, in, in addition to the aesthetics, I mean, the community has been pretty clear that that's important. But also smell. I just want to make sure that what this design, we're moving this, we're not having it sit around for any, okay, thank you. Yeah.
To try and help a smaller overflow to get it out.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Then that, uh, thank you. Um, all right, that, that was all I had. And anyone else? Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I think council can respond to.
Yes, I was going to ask. Thank you.
I, I just don't know whether or not there's been a written opinion that's been actually submitted uh to the district from our office, but uh, there is no legal obligation for the district to allow anybody to connect to this site. And, and I think that's, this, I, I heard people talking about somebody connecting. I, I wasn't sure whether you're talking about somebody just hacking in and, and, and going in and trying to, to connect, which for this type of setup, it would be pretty adventurous. Uh, but um, as far as allowing somebody to connect to it, there is no legal obligation because that's what we check whether or not, you know, somebody, you know, we have an obligation to serve the people, the, the, the parcels, the, the pipe passage by it. There is no legal obligation to ask them to help. And so all those decisions you may by board. If, if and when anybody requests it. And then based on the, the capacity, we'd say, yeah.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, if I may.
Yes, please.
So just a couple of, there were practical comment about these, so I think helpful to answer them now. Uh, no, the district does not dissolve. Uh, much like Sanino CSD, we stick around to manage the collection here in the community and the pipe that takes us to solving. So the district is still here. Um, council just spoke to uh the prevention of people connecting to the line. The only other thing is, uh, if I could like tweet to the way this point just has been describing this, uh, we don't have to wait until they finish us yet. These to start, we just can't connect until they're done. Um, two different things, right? So if our con- uh, consumer Until they're done. Uh, two different things, right? So if our con- uh, construction in the community took us, you know. Eighteen months or two years, uh, we would almost be at when they're gonna be, if we started right now, we'd be basically where they're supposed to be finished with those CIPs. So. Don't think that we have to wait until they're done to get started. It's not a serious.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Again, just wanna urge everybody, May fourteen, please come workshop before the regular meeting. Be great opportunity, have a lot of discussion and interaction about um, this topic as well as. Uh, the collection component. Um, all right, so moving on, we will, uh, let's see, next item is consideration. Oh, I'm sorry, the the action was just to receive and file on this. So, okay, thank you. Um, item eight is the consideration of a letter from the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board regarding a no project alternative.
I mean, I'm present. So, um. For quite some time, the the. Community has been asking, well, what happens if we do nothing, right? What happens if we don't have a project? Um, outside of the fact that, you know, the district presumably would would dissolve. The problem would go back to the county as the owner of the problem. Um, I wanted some more official opinions from the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Board. And to that end, the executive officer from uh, Brian Lodge is here from the water board. Um, so he can answer questions if you have them. Um, since I got this, I wanted to make sure it was made public, right? Uh, so the agenda was a good way to do it. Uh, I agendized it so your board can speak to it and ask uh, Mr. Lodge all the questions you have. Um, that he he's able to respond to. So that's kind of the introduction. I just wanna make sure that. It was put out there and everybody has to see it.
Okay. Great. We'll go ahead and take public comment, and then we'll bring back to the board. So is there anyone that would like to address the board on this item?
So I was looking at the three different options, and the last one that they could, you know, require with us. Designate all um, OWTSs within Los Angeles community as tier four as described in the state's. OWTS policy. This would trigger requirements that OWTS owners would upgrade their system. So. Does that mean that we could just decide on, you know, to upgrade to advanced onsite? You know, um. That seems like it would be a whole lot less expensive in per individual property owner to spend. You know, going, you know, to solving or anything else. So what exactly does that mean?
Can I, can we ask um, Mr. Lodge to? Answer this because it is a little. Oh, sorry. Let's let's have him. Let's just get this one out of the way, because it's probably most important.
Good evening, Brian Lodge, Executive Officer, Central Coast Water Board. So that's in the odds policy, and so what that tier four means, basically, is just not functioning. Repeatedly replaced. Oh, there are lots that don't have the space to replace them. So the the option would really be for those that are for large. Or need to be another uh avenue. We we should put in what our options are in terms of what our label, where our authority is. Uh, don't go, we would go with that option or any of the other options. But ultimately. If you're in a lot that's undersized. There would be an opportunity that uh.
You could actually do. You could actually, you know, um, go with advanced onsite if you did one that was based on a uh collection for. Other pumps that also needs to go to, you know, possibly onsite. So if your line might be too small, then that lot next over or on the other side of you. Could be big enough. And if you both have to go to advanced onsite, then, you know. It's a, you know, easy way for you to help pay for their system. If you can put your system on their lot.
Yeah, ultimately, even if that system. Is getting degraded.
So so I'm gonna um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there, because it was, we're not, this is public comment period.
Time afterwards.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. So we have others who um, public comment. Anybody else in the room first? Okay, anyone online?
Catherine.
Yeah, Catherine Rohr. I um, I do, and I understand, I guess, Mr. Lodge isn't gonna answer the questions, but. It would be helpful to understand, because I was really trying to understand the letter sincerely. And it sounded like, you know, well, they could dissolve the CSD and have the county take over. And they can figure out whether they have money to build something or want to try to get their own two eighteen vote through. I think that's what that means, although I don't know. Um, but then the part about designating everybody as tier four. I there are actual criteria for designating somebody as tier four, so you'd need to actually be failing. So we have. Two thirds of the district, slightly more than two thirds of the district is on perfectly. Large parcels to replace with advanced onsite, and our groundwater monitoring data shows. That those that they aren't impaired, that the water beneath that two thirds is not impaired. So. And we're talking conceivably about only building for phases one and two for the downtown core and the tiny lots, and we all know those folks need a solution. But why? If all the other two thirds larger lots, if they could just do advanced onsite, what's their, what's the motivation to pay for? A system, because it sounds like the penalty here is you'd have to put advanced onsite. Um, on your half acre or acre lot or whatever, right? Three quarters of an acre. So I think I'm just not. Understanding that. And I um, also to the board, you know, talk, when we think about, well, gosh, what would happen if this went to the county? By the same token, you guys keep acting like the five of you are gonna be our board forever, but you're not. And so when you're replaced by someone else, all we know is you can't be obligated to make somebody connect. But you could choose to whoever your replace, your predecessors are, could choose to allow. People to connect. I think that's what council is saying, and so. We trust you, but you are not going to live forever, and this system is. So. Can we come, can we acknowledge that and deal with it, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Any, do we have anyone else online?
No.
Okay. Mr. Elijah, is there anything else you would like to uh, present?
Yeah.
We wouldn't decide which option we maintain if there's a but a vote for another project. Our our perspective is that the basin is impacted. Even advanced systems. Are not gonna treat. To the point where it's not having an impact, whether they're in a large lot, small lot. There are impacts of advanced or non-advanced system. So we strongly encourage the district. To continue down the path of coming up with a solution. There are a community treatment system or connected to another. System. In order to improve the groundwater in the community. It's best. Economically and technologically to do it together. There's the the economy of scale. Come together, we can come together and make that decision. Uh, the cost is lower for everybody. Ultimately, our experience has been the cost will not come down. The longer it takes to get this done. The the higher the cost generally getting. There another question that I.
Uh, maybe from the board, there might be. Okay, if there, no more, any more, one more last chance in the room if there's public comment?
Is the the minimum size of a parcel? According to the county of Santa Barbara, I don't know if it's the state regional quality control boards. Uh, two and a half acre. Over two and a half acres, you could have an independent. Septic system. Other than that, you have to be under a different category.
And we'll let Mr. Lodge to answer that. I think it was at the lamp, it's.
But typically, after you're over a certain size or different requirements. Or when you're in an impacted area, as we see it, there are impacts to the groundwater from nutrients from septic systems. But even if you have an advanced system, a larger lot, you're still having an impact on the groundwater. So that's our concern that there be. Call this a solution so that the groundwater base covers and is no longer. Having nitrate to start.
Thank you. Anyone else online before we move to the board? Okay, go ahead back to the board. So anybody comments or questions?
I have comments. Um, we we've been told all along that anything under two and a half acres. Can't have anything other than a a sewer system of some kind, whether it's affluent for a gravity field. Bottom line. If you don't wanna do anything. And it goes back to the county. You don't have. The county's, if the county, let's say, bang, county's gonna take it over and do it, which they haven't done since nineteen seventy four. They're gonna put in what they're gonna put in. You're gonna pay for it in property taxes. And you'll have no control over that line that goes from here to where we're ghosted. And if they wanna have Ballard tie into it, and if they wanna build houses on that land, they'll do it. If you wanna control it, you wanna have, which is the reason this thing was formed. Then we have the control. We have to make the decision, and that's why we're taking the time we are to make a good decision. So that we have the control of it, that we have what you want and can give you the service you need. If you, if it goes to nothing, it's out of all our hands. We're we're dissolved. It's all gone away. That's not an answer you want, I don't think.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to thank uh, Mr. Lodge for. Uh, taking time out of. Out of his evening to come down here. Your staff has joined us online throughout these years as well. Um, you are a partner in us. We appreciate uh, the working relationship with the regional board and. You know, you look at the letter, and it kind of does look ominous, but we 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 are working together, and we appreciate your support and guidance throughout the years as well.
Yeah, yeah, I should have said that. I should have mentioned that as well when I was speaking, that I really do appreciate the work of the staff and the board. In in trying to come up with a solution and continuing to work towards that, and we will continue to work with you as long as there are, there's meaningful progress towards that. And so we really appreciate that. That that continues and and yeah. The question was asked, or regulatory bodies, and issue letter, it sounds ominous, but ultimately, we wanna continue to work with the district.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for doing that, because it's it's not really a warning letter to us. It's just, it was, it was requested, so you're just kind of clarifying your position. On what if, and it's not like you were sitting here saying, okay, you guys better get this done, and we wanna take it over. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I would just add, you know, in working with county environmental health services, pre-formation even. You know, they are working with us. They're not issuing cease and desist orders. They're not. Issuing um, cleanup and abatement orders or find or notices of violation. They're trying to work with individual property owners while we get through this process. But I think the no project option and the and the um, options that, you know, Mr. Lodge has laid out. The advanced onsite, I understand that, maybe we can do that. But from a regulatory standpoint, there's gonna be, I would imagine. There, there's the potential for seeing greater restriction on our ability to to make improvements on property. So that's just something to think about as well. So, because E H, I mean, early conversations with the E H S, they're like, all right, we're gonna give you guys. Um, you know, we're gonna work with you, because we're trying to work together to come up with a long-term solution. Um, so I hope we can continue to do that in good faith.
Thank you. Again, also, thank you, Mr. Lodge for coming and. Yeah, so I look forward to many more meetings with you down the road here as well. Thank you. All right, I think this, uh, there's no motion on this, um, although you you asked for directions, you.
I just put it out there, if there was additional directing, you wanted to give me, I'm not hearing anything other than.
Yeah, I think.
For Palmer earlier being a comment about what what might be included in next month's uh, workshop.
Right, yeah, and the water board will be here for the workshop. Will the representative be at the workshop on the fourteenth?
Yes, I believe so.
Not necessarily you, no, but just.
Somebody who's got more technical knowledge about the actual property.
That would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to item nine. Uh, planning for decision making related to the wastewater treatment solutions in the upcoming community workshop.
Okay, so um, this is, so we've talked about this item a couple of times, right? Uh, last couple of uh, meetings. Um, and so this is kind of me updating everyone on the various uh, bits of information that have been gathered since the last meeting. Uh, as well as an opportunity to ask additional questions. Uh, so I'm gonna share my screen. Uh, and I'll try and make sure that's larger as I go. Uh, if it's needs to be larger as we go through things, uh, please don't hesitate to to point out, hey, can you make that a little larger? And I'll do what I can. Uh, let me get rid of the ribbon so that it can be that way. Make it a little bit bigger somewhere. There's this. About there?
Yeah.
Good enough? Okay. All right, so um, just for those who have been um. Um, so for those who've been following along with this, um. We started out with a conversation around um. Kind of what are the various areas where we needed to have more information in order to make an informed decision? Uh, particularly for the public and the board. Uh, and so we created these categories of things around, you know, what are the things around collection we didn't need to know? What are the things around treatment we need to know? What are the things around disposal, so on and so forth? And actually, the letter from the water board is actually was one of those items. We said, we need to know what happens if we have a no project alternative. So we've been slowly following up on these. Really focused on getting this information for next month's meeting. I've got the bulk of it now uh, in hand in one form or another. It's not in a nice little package yet. But it will be by this time next month. Um, so I'm not gonna dive into this particular spreadsheet a whole lot, other than just say, you know, so. Under collection, for instance, we're looking at gravity bed. We've got the the financial information. Um, if we go with with affluent, there was still some discussion around ownership uh, of the. Pieces that end up on an individual parcel. I have some information I'll be prepared to share, not as far as the cost of ownership, but. Uh, a little bit more about what ownership might look like. Your board asked me to try and put together some pros and cons, and I'm working through. Trying to to describe what some of the pros and cons are related to that. Not provide answers, just here's a, here's, you know, everything that's a pro on one side is kind of a con on the other. So I'm working through some of that. Had conversations uh, with various installers of systems, with people who own these systems. Um, and I I think at least in my own mind, it's gelling a little bit better, so I'll be able to provide information. Uh, to to your board and the public next week, or or next month rather. And keep in mind, unlike this very formal brown act, that's gonna be much more of a dialogue, right? We're gonna have a chance for much more back and forth. That's the point of a workshop. Um, so people are gonna ask questions, get an answer, ask another question, get an answer, ask another question, so on and so forth. That will all be um. Moderated by uh, Jeff Green, who's helped us in the last couple. So he'll be a familiar face to people. We all know how he works. Um, and it'll be a process similar to what we've gone through in the past. Um, as it relates to collection, and I put the the. Uh, report we heard earlier from Stan Tech, I've been calling that the middle miles, um, as far as collection's concerned, because it's the middle miles, right? It's the miles between here and solving. Um, that's middle between the two of us. Um, a few more things about that. Council commented on uh, the um. The legality of it, meaning the district does not have to um, allow somebody to connect, but I think. Director Farram kind of alluded to this. There are two other big uh, uh, barriers to connection that is, we're gonna, we're going to. Negotiate a contract with the city solving for our waste water. Not anybody else's, just what we plan to produce. So. In order to add somebody else in, well, you'd have to renegotiate that contract. Plus, the pipe sizes that Stan Tech is designed are designed for our flows, not for additional flows. So. You've got multiple uh, barriers. Could they be removed? One at a time. I'm not gonna say they couldn't. It's just more unlikely than than likely. Um, if you get all the way down toward, you know, solving, some other entity would be better off trying to just build their own pipeline as opposed to connecting to ours. Um, so I I can say that as as far as, you know, explosive growth along El Capitan, I think we've got all the pieces in place. So I I can say that as far as, you know, explosive growth along El Capitan, I think we've got all the pieces in place that are there. We do have the cost now for, as you heard, eighteen thousand linear feet. I'll just share, we have spoken again to Don because Don has a five acre kind of cut off in the corner. That they are at least open to having conversations about whether or not. If we did a local solution, that's a different middle miles, right? Because we'd be going around on the Fugio to get to the done. So we can make the calculation if somebody wanted to do it based on, I don't know what the linear feet is, it's about one point one miles as opposed to three miles. So it's about thirty the cost. Although things like lift stations would still be there. So you don't take that out. You're just taking the pipe out of the equation. On the treatment side, I've had additional conversations with the city of solving. You will see when I get into the actual costs. Solving went to their, the the they use a consulting firm that calculates all their rates and therefore did all the calculations related to, okay. If you have flows like we've been talking about coming into the city of solving. What's the cost for the city of solving to do that? Now, I want to differentiate something here, and I'll try and remember to say it next month as well. We're not going to pay for three hundred and seventy two parcels, right? We're going to pay for X amount of capacity. That capacity reflects what we've done from a design perspective through documents called the basis of design. Those are our flows for the next twenty to thirty years. So that's the capacity we would buy from from the community of solving. They've also said that while there is certainly some negotiation we had. They're looking for us to mirror the contracts that are already in place with the community of San Ynez, right? They're not. Looking to have multiple different kinds of contracts. They they've already gone down that with the. The community of San Ynez and are looking to do a similar sort of thing. I've also, like I said, I've met with the city of solving to talk through that independently. I've met with the San Ynez CSD. I've also met with a couple of former CSD general managers who have done similar things. For instance. Many of you may know that the city of Longoke has two. Other communities they serve, they serve Vandenberg Village, they also serve the base, and they have percentage ownership of this, the city of Sol, uh, Longoke, rather, their plant. So. We're in very similar situations as those communities, right? Meaning, one community owns the plan, holds all the liability, runs the plan, and basically charges the other, in this case, it would be two owners, just like it is in Longoke, the other two owners. A percentage based on the capacity that they purchased. So. I'm I'm comfortable that the numbers we have from the city of solving are appropriate for what what we're looking at. If you compare it to what they charge for an individual home or a business, and you kind of do the math, it comes out pretty close. You remember last month, for those who were here. I had put in a plug number based on kind of a mix of houses and commercial buildings based on what I saw in their their fee schedule. And lo and behold, when I got the actual number, it was actually almost right on. So I felt really good about the fact that that number. Held true based on what they would charge if somebody there had the same floaties that we have. Mentioned that we spoke to Dunn, so I'm here kind of on row twenty one. I did haul out the old document the the board heard in twenty twenty and twenty one related to sites. If we end up talking more about local, Paul's directors earlier talked about the different ones that have been considered. We can have that conversation again. I've also done a little looking into qualified operators. Should we have our own system? They are every bit as hard to find as we suspected. Talked to one community in San Luis Obispo County who has a small system. They're forever basically hiring. They're always looking for someone new because small systems like ours tend to be the feeding grounds to larger systems with better. Pay, better, you know, it doesn't matter if it's wastewater or police going to care to figure city to bigger city or whatever. The smaller systems tend to be the step in the door and a step to somewhere else. Did not look into what happens to Manny's existing system. However, we know that if the the Prop two eighteen passes, they are required eventually to connect to us. And other indications that I've had from them say that they'd like to. This this letter is the the consequences letter that we just just heard on with the prior item. It kind of addresses what happens if the the two eighteen fails. So we we've sort of got that answer. Another interesting bit related to. Parcels within the community and ongoing use of septic tanks and or advanced onsite systems. As I was speaking, as some of the folks at environmental health for the county, not the water quality side of things, but. We do have a number of homes and businesses that are using dry wells. And keep in mind, our water table is really shallow. And so if you tried to go to advanced onsite. They're really going to look at those parcels that are using dry well, seepage pits, whatever you want to call them, and get them into some sort of more. Close to the ground surface and because those openly dry wells are openly just a highway right into the low, the shallow groundwater table. So there's that side of it. The other side that I found really interesting as I've gone through this is proximity to the creek. We do have what I would call kind of a full time creek and a couple of part time creeks. And setbacks from those creeks are really interesting. So you might have a large enough parcel, but the creek runs right next to it. So you've got to be. Forget what the footage is, I I wrote it down, but some distance from the creek, even with your leach line. So your your. What you thought was our third acre that you could use to be able to put in a system and leach lines is actually something much smaller. Grants is a grants topic. Disposal, we talked about disposal. Keep in mind, if we send our treatments to, or if we use solving for treatment, that includes disposal. If we do local system, we have to find location for disposal as well. I have a question in then on discharge permit because we know that they can be expensive, trying to trying to figure that one out as part of the ongoing on M costs. For those who got here early, they heard me on the phone. I was talking to. A company that does polling and and such related to this sort of a system. They said, given our size. That's an interesting problem. They're going to think about it some, meaning we're so very, very small. They claim to have done hundreds of them in the smallest community they've ever done was fifteen hundred voters, not three hundred and seventy two parcels. So they said, you know, there's there's that's going to be an interesting discussion because they're not sure how. They would want to recommend we go about that. He wanted to think about it some more. So I've done outreach on that front just to try and get. Some more information. Also, along the the one that's not on here is, I know that counties do proposition two eighteens all the time. I reached out to my former public works director in the county to the north of us, San Luis Obispo County. He's sending me a checklist related to what they do to get through a prop two eighteen and timelines and all that sort of stuff so that we don't have to read in in that that particular wheel. He did remind me, however, that they tend to do them for rates and not for new construction. And they're a little bit different, but he said, it'll get you started. So that's good news. Okay, so that's sort of the 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 what stuff, you know, just kind of the random pieces your your board asked me to track and look into. Let me then dive into this other spreadsheet that has to do with all the costs and I'm sorry, this is so small. Let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger. That ledge wall in the room? Can you see that? Got it in front of me and I don't have my glasses on. So, okay, so I'm not going to go through this whole thing like I did last month. But I do want to say that, as I said, probably a dozen at least times last last month. When you look at anything that I've listed here as individual. Pay attention to what I've said over here on the left, and I I say it time and time again. I assume that all parcels are treated the same because we haven't gone through an assessment engineer's report to say, for instance, that, you know. A site like Maddie's Tavern is going to get a much bigger benefit than my house, right? So I think you can conceptualize that, but I treated this the same for this discussion. So. What that means ultimately is the numbers you see here are inflated for an individual homeowner and probably understated for a business, right? So if you're looking at this in your Maddie's, you're ecstatic. If you're looking at this in your me, you're saying, hey, hold on a minute, shouldn't that be a little lower? Well, that balancing would happen through. A benefit calculation that an assessment engineer would do. So with that is the background, okay, the first background. The other part of that background is that. As I was going through calculations to get to an annual cost of thing, I assumed a thirty year loan. At five percent. Now you would say, hey, I can't get that for my house, but when you get to the state loans, you can get thirty years. And actually, last week, it was a little less than five percent. So I'm comfortable at least saying five percent for now. It might go up, it might go down, but. It doesn't change that quickly, unlike, you know, when you call in your mortgage loaner person and, you know, it's a half point today and a quarter point tomorrow and up and down. It tends to be much more stable throughout the year. All right, so with that all having been said, what you're looking at here is. Collection is in this kind of a beige yellow color, treatment is down below that in the green color, and then at the very bottom, I have disposal costs. And again, remember that disposal only counts if we're doing local. If we go to the city of solving, they handle. So these costs have been updated with all of the engineering thirty percent cost estimates that we've received to date. Remember that. Both Stan Tech and Regen updated theirs about six months ago. So yes, they're six months out of date, but. They also both include that same thirty percent contingency. So if it's gone up a little bit, okay, it's probably within the contingency. But those are the numbers that we have. So real quick, on the collection side, so again, collection, think of the pipes coming out of your house and going to. Through a community collection system, basically to the door of a treatment plant, right? That's what I'm calling collection in this case. So gravity fed collection is, I'll call it twenty eight million. Effluent option B, which was basically all affluent throughout the entire community, was just under twenty two million. And a hybrid where a portion of the community, particularly the downtown and the what we. Shortly called the small lots, meaning the surrounding lots are in a gravity system. Everyone else is on an affluent system is about twenty five and a half. So. Not a real big difference between full gravity fed and hybrid. It's just when you get to full affluent that you see the biggest savings. So that's the capital cost to build this thing. Again, if I treat all persons the same, so on and so forth, and I do that thirty percent loan, that basically means that every parcel for gravity bed. Just for the collection piece would be responsible for seventy five thousand dollars worth. Effluent, the eight thousand and a hybrid sixty eight thousand to get on average annually, you can see what the figure is. What you would pay on your property tax bill. So that's the capital side. So that's what it takes to just build the collection system. You'll see treatment in just a minute. Operations and maintenance, we went through some some calculations on that as well. This hundred and eighty three dollars for affluent and hybrid is based on a ninety five dollar hour rate. You know, you have to have the thing looked at for an hour every year, just to make sure all the affluent pieces on your site are functioning properly, and then. It's based on a five year calculation of having to pump it, and the pumping takes two hours. So that's how you get to a hundred and eighty three dollars. Per individual parcel per year. And then on the community side, so you have a community collection system, right? You've got pipes going down the the. The road, those have to be occasionally cleaned out, that sort of thing. We got estimates on that. It's basically the way I did that is I used the numbers from the community of San Ynez. They do this. Feedbacks and.
No, no.
Hold on, let me let me mute somebody. Jose, you're not muted, whoever that is. If I can move him. Okay, he must have muted. All right. So sorry about that. So I used the calculation from the community solving because like us, they have their own collection system, right, that connects to the. City of Solvang, so I could make a connection or collection sort of estimate by backing into the miles that they have. The miles we would have and made a calculation based on the community's O N M side. So that then totals up, you know, this sort of a number, that's the annual number. You then divide it by our three hundred and seventy two parcels, and that feeds into what the the annual operations and maintenance for the collection system would be. Moving down, I did basically the same thing for treatment. I used the Stan Tech and Foci in a number for local treatment. This seventeen point five million dollar number has been updated with the numbers from the community of solving, so that's their connection cost. That includes the cost that Stan Tech talked about forty five minutes ago or so. So that's an accurate number as of today. Very similarly, you know, did calculations on one end based on the rates that the community of San Ynez and the community of solving are currently paying. So you can get to those pieces of the numbers and just if somebody wants to kind of follow along with my math because it's public information anyway. Single family home in the community of San Ynez, they get charged between seventy five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars to connect. And then about an eighty seven dollars a month under the current rates per month for ongoing processing. Advanced onsite numbers and then effluent disposal here at the bottom. Again, this only matters if we don't go to the city of solving, but we talked about percolation ponds being the cheapest, percolation chambers being about five point two million dollars. That mostly being driven by land purchases. We would need some four acres to do that. And injection wells, while cheap to build, are really expensive on an annual basis. They're almost four million dollars a year, according to the the consultants that looked at that. So. See if this one. Let me make this one a little bigger for you. All of those numbers together, and you can begin to see how this all fits together. So here's the capital at the top. So if you went with a local solution, right, and you use gravity collection, MBR for treatment, that's what we've been looking at for. A treatment solution in percolation chambers, you saw that on the prior slide versus the hybrid versus affluent. And then saying for the the community of solving, gravity, hybrid, affluent, you can see the cost. So. Clearly, gravity fed local is about fifty three million, gravity fed solving is about forty five, and you can kind of do the math going across here. I intend to have, I've got this reworked in a in a PowerPoint. I think it makes it a little easier to see, but this is the numbers that that you're just adding up, right? You're just saying, oh, I went gravity fed, I went MBR, I went city solving, whatever. And so that's how you add these numbers up, and that's what they come up to. Did the same thing for O N M, so you can see what that looks like on an annual basis. I think this is the one that will be of most interest to people. Okay, so wait, what's what's all that mean to me, right? Again, I'll say what I said earlier and said a bunch of times last month. This assumes every parcel is the same. Not every parcel is the same. Commercial is going to pay more, residential is going to pay less than these most likely. But this is what it could look like. So here's that local system. Gravity to MBR versus an affluent MBR. On an annual basis, about ten thousand dollars for that on a local solution, nine thousand dollars for the affluent side. In my own mind, I was trying to wrap around, what does that really mean to me? The the difference between those two numbers? And I realized it's about eighty dollars a month. So, you know, I don't know what kind of vehicle you drive. I drive a big truck. That's a half a tank of gas. Okay. It's kind of the same difference when you go to the city of solving, gravity fed coming in just below nine thousand dollars and affluent being just over eighty thousand dollars. So this. This is cheaper by fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars. And you get a get a sense for that. Again, can emphasize enough. Businesses are going to pay more, residential is going to pay a little less because it's all about the benefit you receive. And how we categorize things from a from an ongoing, long M perspective. Let me continue some more.
I can't get the door back open.
Something's going on with the door. Sorry, folks. So I think I gathered all the information from a numbers perspective. This is more detail than I intend to go through next month. I'm going to keep it a little higher because I realize I'm a little bit in the weeds even here tonight, but this is kind of a buildup. I want to make sure that. If there's something your board or the public that's here or online sees, that they say, hey, what about this side or the other? I can make sure nothing else to just talk about it next month. Even if I don't have a slide for it. All of these, for instance, the couple of questions that have been asked and we've answered before, but I'll I'll answer it again. All of these calculations, we had both Stan Tech and Regen include costs and estimates, and they just included a single number. For things like laterals and the cost of a tank and the cost to connect electrical. If we go with affluent, your board's going to have to have a conversation about which pieces we provide, which pieces we own, all that sort of stuff. But these numbers, those those numbers are included in the capital costs. Uh, but these numbers, those, those numbers are included in the capital costs. Um, that was primarily driven because, uh, Mr. Bounce from Regen included that because it made sense. When you're doing an affluent system to include all that, so we had Stan Tech go back and add a cost for, for laterals. Think that's it, um. I did allow for, sorry, one other thing related to affluent. I did allow for the fact that, um, as you heard Ms. Poitras say a while ago. Um, that if you use affluent, you could eliminate potentially the Grand Avenue lift station. I did take that number out of the. calculation. So, the affluent side has been reduced by one list station cost. Of about five hundred thousand. Think that's it, Chair.
Great. This is awesome. Um, we'll go ahead and have public comment and then we'll bring it back to the board. Did you, okay. Yeah, who, who, who's going to come up first? We got two people, it looks like. Anna Marie? Go ahead, Anna Marie.
See that last slide? Uh, so Anna Marie Gott, um, and I just have really one question because we're looking at all of these numbers. Um, I don't know that these numbers include, um. The decommissioning of your own, uh, septic on site. So. That is my question. Is it, you know, does it include that? Because that could be an ex, you know, an extra ten thousand, an extra five thousand or fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, to anyone. And, um, I think that's important to note for, for everyone in each of these scenarios. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Trent, and I just. They wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Savage, but if there was any, uh. Everything, all the numbers we're seeing here are based on a thirty year loan schedule. It's not correct, yeah. But isn't there some holes that we might be able to look into a four year? Uh, financing and see what that would do. But I think bottom line, I'm totally in favor of all this, but I think the cost is going to be the really deciding factor. So, um. That's why the, the other thing I want to mention is, is it possible that we can look at a municipal bond that would help fund some of this? That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? You have anybody online? Okay, Catherine?
Hi, I, yeah, I had a question. I think on the slide previous to the one you just had up, Guy. I, I saw a seventy five to a hundred thousand connection per parcel. Is that the upfront out of pocket lateral connection cost? So that's before everybody starts paying their assessments? Or was that a different number? Because that was a shocking number. I hadn't seen anything like that before. So I just want to be clear on what that was.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, I believe the number you're referring to, let me get to it, uh, once this thing loads.
Thank you.
Uh, is, uh, what are that? I think it's just the one that you're talking about right here.
Uh huh.
That is the cost for a single family home in, that's going to connect to the San Luis CSD.
Uh huh.
That's what they pay to connect. That's their. Building up their lateral, uh, would not be included in that because lateral is run by homeowners. So that's just like, we're going to pay. Some five million dollars to connect to the community of solving. That's the cost for an individual homeowner to connect to the San Luis line.
Is that for a new construction? Or anybody?
Or a new home?
Okay, new construction, new, okay.
So where is the, where's the information about the lateral cost? Did I miss that? Because it kind of goes with Anna's question about the cost to decommission your old septic, but then you also have to pay for a lateral, your own. Each parcel has to pay for its own lateral connection to a gravity system. Isn't that right?
Oh, answer this one more, I mean.
Yeah, and then.
Yeah, so as I mentioned during my presentation, uh, those numbers were included by both Regen and. Stan Tech in their capital cost calculations. Uh, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I think, uh, Regen included twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and I had, um, Stan Tech use the same number.
But you're not financing that, the individual homeowner is paying it. It's not your cost, it's a homeowner's cost.
Come to the workshop. So on this one, we can, we can dive into the specifics on this. It is important to note, though, I believe the Regen study did include. Uh, cost of decommission in, in theirs, if I'm not mistaken, right? Regen, the Regen study did it include?
I don't recall. I don't think so because they were, um, they were thinking that you might get the user tank in some cases, not many, but at least some cases.
Okay.
Uh, and just to be clear, my experience, uh, with decommissioning tanks like this, um. It's not as hard as people tend to think, um, from Mr. Logician comment, but, um, my experience has been in the past that what. Uh, is often done is you break the bottom of it so that it can't hold water any longer and you fill it with gravel and you're done. You can have it physically removed, uh, but that's been an approach I've seen used elsewhere, uh. In the local region.
So we, I'll just, just tagging, tagging on to this, it probably would be helpful then for the workshops, if there are some costs that. The individual homeowner would be responsible for in any of these scenarios, if we could at least. Note what those items are, like, for example, if we do affluent, the homeowner is going to be responsible if they have to upgrade their electrical. To co, to accommodate it, that would be the homeowner's responsibility. So, thank you.
Uh, if I may respond maybe to a couple of these other, uh, public comments real quick. So, um. Yes, there are some, uh, programs that are forty years versus thirty. Um, thirty is the not guaranteed, but the most likely one. To obtain, um, just as we know, we'll be looking for grants, right? Uh, so the numbers aren't reduced by any grant amount. That's kind of full fair on that. Um, and. Both the thirty year loans that I'm talking about and the forty year loans are based on a bond that the. The state of California has done, so they're a bigger bond issuer, so therefore they get better rates than we would get anyway. So. You probably, I mean, we could look at it, but you're probably much better off just taking a loan from the state who's issued those bonds as opposed to us attempting to. Put a ballot measure together, that's right. But it's, it's a great thought. Yeah, no credit rating, no assets.
Just a bunch of good people.
Just a bunch of nice people.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, alright, well, any, nobody else online for a public comment? Alright, we'll go ahead.
Let me, let me verify. I'm sorry, it wasn't a second ago, but let me just make sure I don't want.
Well, why you, okay, thank you. So I, I, just again, reminder, February, May, May fourteen, really big meeting. Uh, if you do have questions in advance of that meeting, as you're looking through the material, or you're just kind of wondering what if, or. What does this mean or how does this work? Please, please, please don't hesitate to send an email to Guy with those questions. The more we can, uh, know ahead of time, what you're interested in learning about and questions you might have, and that we can answer in the workshop. That would be really, really beneficial. Okay, um, anybody on, any board members, questions, comments? Go ahead, Jessica, refer them.
Uh, well, a couple of things I wanted, you, you, uh, touched on grants, Mr. Savage, and thank you for doing that, um. You know, I, I think a lot of discussion at the board has been that, you know. We feel that, um, you know, this is, uh, wow, you know. While we are a part of the, the problem, this, this also has been thrust upon us and other communities haven't gotten. Uh, grant support in, in addressing some of these issues. So to that end, you know, we have been talking to the regional board and staff and, and. Uh, one of the things that, you know, that I look at, the, the regional board is most favorably on consolidation with solving. Because it just, it's one less treatment plant run by a small community where things can go wrong. Where you have to hire a new treatment plan operator every so often, as Mr. Savage has said. So, you know, to that end, um. We'll be knocking on your door, Mr. Lodge, and I know that the times are tough for this and, and, uh. Your, your staff has indicated that the support was, it's not always your decision. A lot of that does go up to Sacramento. But, um, you know, I'm hopeful that, that we can bring the cost down, you know, with, with some, uh, grant support and maybe, maybe even county, county support. Um, uh, Mr. Savage, we talked about other things to talk about on there. To me, what's really. Uh, big on that too, and it's, it's a, uh, it's kind of, uh, subjective. Approach is the risk factor. And to me, the risk factor of a local versus solving, which is probably why the regional board has been. Um, so more supportive of the consolidation. We, we don't. Our, our risks are a lot more unknown on a local, local solution. And that even goes down, I think we've talked about fully exits with the chambers, uh. We don't know the, the, the soil, um. Up there on, 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 make it really fine, maybe we need more than four, but you know, once you build that and you have a chamber system, it has to work. It, it has to work. And if it doesn't work, regional board is going to say, well, you got to get more land. And so I'm just concerned, uh, about, I mean. If there's no more land, then, then what if? So I'm concerned about that. Um, so I guess long winded, the risks of the. We're pretty sure when we send it down to solving, they've got an operating plant that has been going for a long time for a small addition to that. Those risks are much lower than, than having a own plant. I, I did want to say one other thing on the, is this a draft card? Is that? That's finalized? We constantly talk about that we're going to have, uh, a property owner vote next year. And I just don't know if we're going to have that when you look at what we have to do to get to a property vote by next year. Um, we haven't completed the design, we haven't done the environmental, we haven't negotiated the contract, we haven't done the engineer's. Uh, report. So that's a lot of stuff to get done without, I don't even know if we have the money to do that. So I'm just concerned about that. We're going to have a vote next year. Okay, we'll see. I doubt it, but.
Got to have a goal.
Got to have a goal. We've had plenty of them. You have the president hold that.
I know we get a pool going. Um, okay, thank you very much, Director Faram, Director Parks, anything? Again, remember, we're trying to give, um, uh, Mr. Savage some direction so that we are well prepared for this May fourteen meeting. And anticipate what the community needs to know and that we have, we're ready, we have the answers, et cetera, so.
So Guy, will, when will you have a more fleshed out version of this? So, I mean, we'll see it before the meeting. Yes or no?
So, more fleshed out.
I mean, as far as.
More detail.
Yeah.
I'm not going to give you more detail. I, I don't know what other.
More numbers as far as San Luis figures and all that, so you said you have all those. Okay, so the, the, this, this is what we have.
Yeah, the numbers, the, the dollar numbers are in there.
Okay.
Uh, unless it's something that I've not considered.
Alright.
Um, uh, I, I can get a quote for decommissioning a system, but.
But I mean, like, I know we, before we discuss, we don't know if it's seven, it mean how much they're going to charge per. What our connection fee is going to be.
Okay, they, they've given me that number based on the flow calculations that we used in the basis of design. They sent it to their consultant and their consultant said, charge them this.
We can still negotiate, though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Palmer.
I would just say, I think for the public at the workshop, it'd be helpful to, to talk about finance, finance options. I mean, it's came up tonight. Grants are one of those who kind of have them in different places. So how do we, I think if we can address how, what are our instruments or options for paying for the system? Uh, either to reduce costs or to finance what remains after, after grants. And, you know, it's a thirty, it's a forty, I don't know what the instruments are out there that we entertain. Um, grants, just, just to pull it all into one place. It's going to cost me this much and what are, what are the ways we can pay for it? Maybe it's those three things. But other than that, thank you for, um. Pulling all this together and answering, answering our questions. I'm feeling comfortable with. You know, pending, pending what we hear at the workshop, I think this gives us the data we need to move forward with the project description. So thank you. That's what I've got.
Thank you.
I wish people hadn't left because there's, there's stuff that. I want to encourage everybody to go to that workshop. Call, do a phone thing. Call everybody you know that's involved in this. You're going to get this in the mail, but. There, a lot of times you're going to look at it and think, oh, they're already deciding for me, so, but we're not. We want you to participate, um. All the numbers that you see on what he's got, down to the point of how it breaks out to an individual person, are pretty solid. You can't break out the individual cost to the individual homeowner for a variety of reasons. One of them is, as Guy has said, he treated everybody the same. And everybody's property isn't the same. It's going to get divided out by what you gain from it, what your benefit is. And it's going to be different for, for homeowners versus businesses. We also have to come up with a project description. When we get that, we can start getting grants and applying from. Nobody will give you a loan, nobody will give you a grant if you can't tell them what your project is. So that's what we're working towards. It's a process. I've said it a thousand times. And you've got to do things in certain orders and you, they take time. They take a lot of time. And we're trying, we're doing the best we can. I have gained a tremendous amount of knowledge from just being on the board the short period of time I've been here. To looking at the inner workings that we can't necessarily tell you all about because we don't know all about it. We're still asking questions. We're still trying to find out. The workshop, we're getting closer. And this workshop is going to be a very important, critical. Piece of this big puzzle. So, tell everybody you know, come to that meeting. We'll get a lot of chance to answer a lot of your questions that we will refine by then. And we're still waiting for answers to come in. We have to wait for other people to give us stuff. Can't make them tell us. Takes time for them to do it too, so. Bear with us. We're, we're trying to move at the fastest rate we can, but still be, um. Doing it right. Paying attention, crossing the T's, dotting the I's and making sure we give you the best option. That we can come up with. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lodge?
Hey, grant funding is, it brought up a few times. I do want to. When I'm sure you're aware, Proposition Four is passed by Bell last year, so climate change.
Alright.
Uh, initiative and my understanding, but we're hearing is that one point a billion funds allocated this year, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. Coming up pretty quick, uh, for drinking water, recycling water and regional conveyance projects. I don't know if that would, oh, the project or not, but to your point, it's always a good downhill ready project. Never know whether it's going to be grant funding, when it's coming up. And the state board, this is who we work with, Sacramento. Oftentimes have projects that are close. They have fun, there's funding, it's like they're going to go with a project that's ready to go. And you never know when that funding is going to dry up or go away based on budget issues or on tax issues. Again, just encouraging that they can keep it forward.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, we definitely should jump on that one. Um, uh, again, thank you, Guy. This is excellent information. I, I hope it's helpful for the community and. Understanding the, the whole picture from high level all the way down to the, the details, um. I'm feeling really good about the data and. Uh, again, as Director Palmer noted, pending the community feedback on, um, on this. Um, I hope that the board would feel comfortable by the June meeting, that we would be able to actually have a vote on this. Is it? Oh, that's right, sorry, sorry. Let me not jump ahead of myself here. Okay, that's it. Let's go on to the. We're all done. Let's move on to the.
Just one, one, one comment now. Who all is going to be at the community workshop? We're going to have. Uh, a facilitator, but is then Stan Tech going to be there? Uh, can we have Stan Tech, can we have Regen, can we have Water Quality Control Board? I mean, will we have experts like that available to us at the community workshop or what was the plan there?
Um. Sorry, making that bad. Um, so you heard earlier, we expect somebody from the Water Board, we expect somebody from the county as well. Um, I've spoken to, uh.
Director Johnson at the county, gave him a copy of the card, said, please be there, and I watched him put it into his calendar. Um, so the, the two, our two local regulators will be there, I had not planned on um, having uh. I I would also add that City Solving will probably have a representative here. Um, I had not planned on having Stan Tech or um, Regen there. Um, we could, it's, it's. It's a cost, but you know, if your board thinks worthwhile, I can try and, try and get them to come out.
I mean, just in my opinion, I mean, that's, that's a big decision. Whether you go gravity versus F one. I mean, it's, it's a, this is a big cost difference, and it's a big decision, and I think people may have questions, that's in my humble opinion, so.
Get down the diet.
Yeah, I'd agree, I mean, if we're, if this is the most important, we wanna have all those resources here, the third, the third party experts, not staff, not board. To be able to answer those questions, so I think for the evening, that's.
Yeah.
Money well spent to have this meeting myself.
Yes.
Alright, I'm hearing a consensus.
Yes, I wonder if, I I don't know about Regen, but I wonder if uh, like Stan Tech would give us the courtesy to attend. Um, I, you know, I can't speak for Regen, I assume he's gonna.
Were you doing a remote option or no? This is all in person?
No, um, there was no plan, much like the last one, there was no plan for non testimony, so to speak, it was gonna be broadcast just because managing.
Right, right, no, I, I appreciate that, okay.
For instance, if that's the only region can attend, uh, it it's, it's a little clunkier, but.
Or maybe he's on by broadcast and if you need to call him, I don't know, let's, but there's a way.
I could reach out and see if they're, they might even be available.
I mean, he's also engaged in the area, so I mean, maybe he could work something out too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe by, maybe by then.
I can, I can certainly reach out, I'll take that as direction from the board. To uh, try and get them here, to your point, I'm sure we can get someone to stand back, because they're local, a little more difficult. To do that, uh, to maybe round out that answer a little more. Um, in speaking with the facilitator, uh, his suggestion was that I do the presentation, because presenting this stuff, people. Seem to understand the way I've been describing it, um. He didn't think it would be good for Stan Tech, because they tend, because they tend to get a little too deep. He said, you, you've seen me, I seem to have been able to find a balance tight enough that people understand. It's still responded questions, but I love the thought of having those two here to, to respond to the detailing stuff, that'd be great.
Um, also, just wanted, is, um, you're, are you are here for May fourteen or not, okay, um, great. The, the time allotment for the workshop is one hour, I think, right?
Really, I mean.
Okay.
The invite I've sent you guys is to get it on your calendar is an hour, so that's called in the mail system.
I was, right, so good, good, cuz I wanna, I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for everybody, I think we wanna make sure we allot. Ample time so that everybody is sufficiently comfortable that they have their questions answered. Concerns addressed and et cetera.
In talking to the facilitator, um. We kind of came to the conclusion that keeping the Q and A around forty five minutes at most, just because people's minds tend to drift after about that.
Sure.
He said, you know, you gotta keep it focused enough, but you gotta get all the questions answered. Uh, the more information you can get out there ahead of time, uh, and we will be, so just to, to that end. Uh, yes, we've got postcards that are going out, um. Every post office box and most leave us will get one, everybody um, who uh. Doesn't list their post office as their address of record with the um, county for their property tax bill. Will get one at their home, so kind of both those, um, social media, our website, flyers, that sort of stuff. I'm reaching out to, um. Please get the name of. The local newspaper, try and get it in, in the local newspapers.
Great.
What is it? Don't say that, it just didn't sound right.
There's two.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe send it to Mary Nash at the Chamber too.
It's a good idea.
Sorry.
To Mary Nash.
Oh, yeah.
So this chamber, so she can get it out to her members.
And, oh, and our mailing list is two hundred and fifty people, just so people have an understanding of how big our mailing is, two hundred and fifty addresses. It's not twenty or thirty.
Great. Thank you. Um, okay, anything else on item nine? Alright. Uh, we did, we did public comment, I think. Alright, listen, uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of topics and dates for the May and June twenty five, twenty twenty five meetings and workshop.
If I may, um, really briefly, I I agendized this so you could just talk about the meetings, I didn't wanna have any brown act issues, and you guys could talk about it when you need to. Um, so, May fourteenth workshop, followed by a regular meeting, cuz we've got some administrative stuff we've gotta do. Um, the question has been raised by at least one board member, um, do you wanna try and get to a discussion about a project? Description that night, or do you wanna wait until June? I had always assumed the latter, that you would wait until June, but there's also some interest in, you know, while it's fresh in our minds, we've just heard from people, and we've got it right here, should we do it?
I think we need to get the input from them and be able to digest it a little bit, I don't know that we'd be ready to. Make that decision that night, I'd like to, you know, take what they've said and kind of let us. Think about it a little bit, maybe some of the committees, the committees talk about it at the committee meetings to address their portion of. What the questions were.
If I may recommend, when I present, if, if the board is of any inclination to take some action. Following the workshop, at the meeting, we can certainly agendize that. So it, so it, so you will have the option. But you don't have to. Uh, versus if it's not on the agenda, then you.
Right.
Concluded from taking action, so. Absorb that and, and direct us however, however.
But that's true, if we put it on the agenda, I mean, if there's no motion, it dies for lack of emotion, and then we agendize it for, for June.
You know, another, another option, I was just looking at the calendar, so. We could have a special meeting on the twenty eighth, which is two weeks later. And it would be the only thing on the agenda. Um, and then there's always the eleventh, I don't know what Mr. Savage thinks, how heavy our agenda would be on the eleventh.
On June?
On June eleventh, yeah.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, okay, so I, I, I would, I would advocate for, uh, as Director Nelson said, maybe the, the twenty eighth or. Of May as a special meeting or. Um, just on our June eleventh meeting, and then.
I'd support that too, yeah.
And maybe Mr. Savage, um, after hearing from comments, he could even tee it up a little bit with. A couple of options that, you know, could be tweaked or whatnot, but, but these are, you know, these are the things that we heard, and, and then the board could. Pick or modify or whatnot, rather than starting from scratch, and I think you could do that, Guy.
So, given the importance of this, if we did a special meeting on the twenty eighth, is everyone here?
Yes. Okay, and I do like that idea, at least to agendize for action after the workshop, cuz we could give you direction.
Yes.
To, for whatever we'd want to, uh, consider on the twenty eighth. With a final decision potentially then, or on the eleven, the regular meeting on the eleventh.
And everyone is here for June eleven still, right?
I'm good, but both of them. All three of them are a matter of fact.
Yeah, that's our regular.
Okay, good, so we have some, we have some good options then, so we'll do that, we'll agendize. If every, if, and again, it just isn't pressuring anybody to feel like you have to vote at that, if we're not ready, we, it dies for lack of motion. Alright, or, and then we could consider a special meeting on the twenty eighth of, depending on everyone's, how they're feeling and the information.
The, you know, venue, this review can be tough to find.
Maybe we could add direction Mr. Savage to um, check into the twenty eighth in the interim and lock.
Yes.
As, as an option, we can always pull the plug.
Exactly, thank you.
Maybe, maybe send them the notice of our meeting. So they know when it's gonna be.
Okay, is that sufficient guidance for you? Okay, terrific, alright, um, public comment on this item. No takers in the room. Okay, and everybody's deserting us. I know, the exciting part's really, the exciting part's really coming here. Um, alright, we're moving on to the really exciting part now, item eleven, discussion related to the draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six budget.
Okay.
Lead us off, Mr. Savage.
Uh, every year we're required by law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lodge.
We're required by law to uh. Put together and adopt a, a balanced budget. I have provided a draft document, um, and a timeline for your board's consideration. Uh, attached to this, it includes tonight's meeting, um. A meeting by the Finance Committee on May ninth to review a draft, a true draft, draft budget. An approval of your boards, the by board of preliminary budget at the, the May fourteenth meeting, and then meeting after the workshop. Uh, because there's publishing timelines that have to happen, right, cuz a week later I have to get it published. So that we can have a hearing on June eleventh to adopt it, now. Uh, by then, for the most part, unless you guys wanna tweak some things, we don't have a very, very, very complex budget, so I don't know that you'd be tweaking a whole lot to the budget, but. Uh, if you want to, you can make those kind of changes uh, on June eleventh, um. And that would give us the timeline to get this thing approved within the year before the new fiscal year starts, because again, as we all know. Our budget year runs July one to June thirty, um, so we're in the, the closing months of the budget year. I don't see a need to walk through the spreadsheet again, kinda saw it before. Um, I can certainly bring it up really quickly, uh, just so you can take a quick peek, but I'm not gonna walk through it in detail. It's got the same basic items that we've talked about in the past, I think the only things that I would. If you know, if it loads, hello, there we go. The only things I would note, um, and this is, you know, in the, the documents that's attached, so you can, you can find it in there. Much of next year's budget is reliant on leftover funds, carry forward, carry over, whatever you wanna call it, from the current fiscal year. Um, it does include an estimated three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of carry forward. Uh, I feel comfortable in that number now, in particular, because um, much to his surprise, I had uh, Mr. Faram. Deposit a seventy five thousand dollar check with the county's treasury.
Five dollars.
Told me seventy five dollars.
And when he showed up and they're like, oh, seventy five thousand, I had filled out all the paperwork to make sure you got it right, so we were good.
Just wanted to make sure to get that.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't wanna wait, I, it would have been a week and a half before I could have gotten to the county.
I drove up there with my windows up down too.
So, given that that check is, is literally been deposited now, uh, I feel comfortable that will, will begin the year. Um, uh, accordingly, uh, I'll get to, when we get to uh, the working roadmap in just a couple of minutes. Um, what we have funds to pay for and what we don't have funds to pay for next year. And I'll talk a little bit about um, how I see that all working out, to, to help us get to a proper team next year, and how I think that can happen. So in, in short, you know, the only thing that I've, as I've gone back through, you know, I, every time I come to the meeting, I look at this thing again, the only thing that. I think is a little understated, I don't know that we'll have three workshops next year, but workshops are more than three hundred dollars. Just the copy for those cards is more than three hundred dollars now. Mailing now is, you know, a letter is seventy five cents, you know, so those costs have really uh, gone up, so it's closer to like eight hundred dollars for every mailing. Um, I'm even using on as much as I can postage stamps as opposed to real stamps, you know, because they're twenty cents cheaper. Uh, so, uh, that number's probably off if we went with three workshops, but if we only go with two, it's. Pretty good spot on, which is really what we're talking about next year anyway, so maybe we're all there. All the other numbers, um, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, uh. The big studies, again, here on line twenty eight, uh, seventy four sixty professional services. Three hundred thousand for the eighty percent design, um, that's based on a recent quote from an engineering firm. Uh, they just kind of said, well, I asked them what would you caught, charges to go from where we're at to eighty percent design, he said three hundred thousand. Um, and a hundred and twenty five for environmental, and keep in mind, as we've said a number of times. If we connect to solving, um, environmental may be significantly less, just because we're disturbing land that's already been disturbed. If we build our own plant, um, environmental will be larger and more involved, and potentially more expensive. Because you'll be building a plant in a place that's presumably fair dirt today. The rest is just kind of the, the typical sort of thing, I did include a reserve of almost sixty thousand dollars, uh, that's based on. Our special tax revenues, that's twenty percent of it, um, so, you know, the, the numbers basically work out, um. Uh, when you, when you go through the whole thing, so we're pretty good shape on that front. Mostly just introducing this to remind you that we do have an action next month, and ask you to look at the, the attached document in detail. Um, I'm gonna circle around with each of you individually, which I can do, uh, with the brown act, as long as we talk to each of you about each other said. Just to, I'm gonna ask you if you have any comments specifically, so expect a caller from here in a couple of weeks. With that, this is just to provide direction to staff, kind of an item, just wanted to make sure it's on the board trailer.
Okay, well, we'll take pub, public comment first on this. I think you're the only one left standing, Dennis.
Might have a budget question.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Dennis is gonna make it.
Question is, uh, eighty percent design, we do. At what state will the design be when it goes before the vote?
Yeah, that's what we're, that's, yes, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? We, do we have anybody left online?
There's a couple there, but they're not raising their hands.
Okay, alright, uh, then we'll bring it back to the board. Any, any questions, um, other items that you would like to see, comments, direction for Mr. Savage? Lisa, you look eager.
Process and schedule is very similar to what he does for.
Yeah, my, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, jump in.
My only comment is on the well testing. And if you look at the total amount for well testing, that's about the amount you're saying we'd have to dip into our reserves. And I continue to think that the county or the Water Board should be paying for it. And so, I know, I was like.
He knew you were gonna say that.
Yeah, so he left before I.
Put the pressure.
No, I, I'm serious, so I just. I don't know, maybe, do we put it in the budget, do we, do we zero it out for our budgeting for it? I mean, we go back to this fundamental question, we're here to solve the problem. Not to be a testing agency, we've got data already. I'm just, while we're moving toward having to get all this other work done. You know, that's a material amount of money that can go towards getting the work done. Move us toward getting to a vote in twenty twenty six, Director Bayram. So anyway, that's my, that's my comment on the testing.
That's really good, Lisa.
Well, it begs the question too, as we move forward this. We have, what is it, what does it add?
Well, that's why.
I'm gonna go.
If, what else, so I'm just, I'm just raising the issue. Whether we keep it in there or not, or show it as unfunded for next year, and then figure out what to do with it. So, that's my comment.
Maybe.
My thought would be to leave it in there, and if we decide not to do it. I mean, get something else. Do we need to do it, do we have a purpose for doing it now? We've, it's, I think it's served its purpose to tell us what everybody was asking. We know what it, it's, you know, it's gonna be in the same ranges, it's not gonna change what we're doing at this point.
Right, until we put something in place.
You could leave it there and then decide not to spend it and reallocate it.
Yeah.
Or vacate it altogether.
Yeah.
I, I'm just.
Well, I think to Lisa's point, I agree, we're, we're not in the testing.
Yeah.
Business, that would be.
And if he, if the, uh, county EPA or Water Board wants to test it. We have a well, you can test it.
So, I'll, I, I'm going back to what something General Manager Savage always tells us, it's a budget, it can change. We can choose to reallocate those funds once it's approved, doesn't lock us in, but it just creates an expectation. And it, and our constituents, I mean, I hear about it frequently, why do we continue to test, you know? Why are we spending money on testing when we should be putting those resources toward the solution, so.
I mean, just one small comment, I have asked both of them if they would fund it.
Thank you.
And to me, not having.
So, I'll just say. Well, I think it's, it's important to, look, I think once we have, have, have come to, have come to a vote on a project design. And we start that work, I mean, I fully intend that we're out there, you know, I would go with Guy, we could meet with everybody, we're gonna be pounding the payment. Payment hat in hand, this is potentially a negotiating point, especially with the stakeholders who are more interested in testing than, than us. You know, I mean, everybody knows, and we said this at LAFCO as well, that funding is an issue. The, our ability to move with speed is directly related to funding, so.
I mean, unless they wanna come in and pay for the environmental review.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand dollars or something else, so anyway, it, that's my comment.
Yeah, you don't need it for a budget for.
Alright, any um, other comments or questions, direction for General Manager Savage? All right, any um, other comments or questions, direction for general manager Savage? So I don't think we need a motion on this. Okay, we're all good. All right, next item on the agenda, consideration of membership on existing committees. Including possible appointment to one or more alternate members of subcommittees.
Yeah, so um, you currently have four standing uh, subcommittees, finance, project management, technical and grants. Um, each of them consists of two board members, uh, and that's it. We removed me this year, which made my life easier. But unfortunately, it's made holding a corner or obtaining a quorum more difficult, uh, when these subcommittees meet. Because both board members have to be there to have a forum where you can't have a meeting. At last, but meeting, your board suggested maybe you could appoint alternates, um, but can't do that without agendizing. I've agendized it for your request, so uh, that's why we're here. I did include also uh, the resolution, uh, number twenty-three oh one, which is how we formed the subcommittees. How that was all done, what their goal was, that sort of thing. It was adopted back on the twelfth of July of twenty twenty-three. If, if your board chooses to do some things that are uh, against this, so to speak, I would bring back an official resolution updated that dates twenty-three oh one. So that we're fully.
Okay. So one potential option is, is we could even look at, I mean, if there's a committee that's not necessarily terribly active. I mean, I'll throw it out there, the finance committee, I mean, the board could approve the, the invoices. And it's some, at the point when we get more active in terms of um. Ventures that we're working with and invoicing, et cetera, we could revive the finance committee to have that, to do that detailed look at the. At the invoices coming in for the board. Is that? One option, and that sort of helps us with the quorum issue.
Yes.
Or, or is there somebody that would else, else would like to be on the finance committee? Cause I can do the.
Cause I spoke with, we, we, we talked about this last meeting and we since was agenda is, we couldn't do anything, but I am the weakest link. I mean, there's no doubt about it and.
Well, you're in your busy season as well.
Willing to do it, so.
You know, have him step back and step in if needed, or if it's appropriate, be an alternate to be able to sit down on any of the committee. These subcommittees as a fill-in if somebody can't be there so that we can still have a meeting. And I, 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 I don't know which is appropriate.
Resolution if we have, if we had an alternate.
No, not that I saw. Um, I, I didn't see anything in there that prevents it. Um, it just says your board's gonna per uh, point.
Okay.
You guys recommend she makes it fun.
My time's pretty much my time. I can pick and choose what I do when I do it and don't want to do what I don't want to do when, so.
Wh- which one has been most problematic?
Finance. Finance. It's, it's the regular one in, i- if I may, um, I think President Kennedy's commentary, you know. Uh, another option for the finance committee is if all it's doing is recommending at that particular meeting. The invoices, you're kind of going down this path. Uh, maybe you don't need a meeting just to recommend invoices, but if we're reviewing the audit or doing something other. This is a more substantial, maybe you do need it that month. Uh, so there could be a combination of.
Well.
If we're exploring finance options, for example, on um, construction, et cetera, then yeah, that would be per view finance committee we would meet, could meet.
Well, I'm just hearing that Director Parks is saying that he, he gladly step aside. I hear Director Nelson say he would step into finance and maybe if we just took that step tonight. Then that might solve most of our problem and see where it goes. I'm, I'm hearing that you're fine with that.
That's wonderful. That's why we did discuss the last month about.
And just, and both of the committees would, are on the same day. Yeah, so they're, they're right there, so it's, it's. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, sorry, public com. Thank you. Anybody, nobody, any, what way, anybody online still that's comment on this one? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we um, add Director Nelson in the place of Director Parks on the finance uh, committee.
Excellent. This is awesome.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. A roll call, thank you.
Um, so that was uh, Director Param.
Yes.
Hi.
Director Parks.
Hi.
Director Nelson.
Hi.
Vice President Palmer.
Hi.
President Kenny.
Hi. Okay, welcome to the finance committee. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, here we go. We're getting into the home stretch here, folks. Next item on the agenda, reports, subcommittee reports. Uh, I'll start finance committee. We did not meet because we didn't have. Uh, grant committee.
We did not meet, and I guess I would say, do we need to meet before we have a project description?
Proposition four.
I know, but. Maybe we can.
Yeah. I mean, maybe not.
Yeah.
You can, you can talk to them.
All right, anyway, I don't have a report. We didn't meet.
Okay. How about project management?
Well, we met and, I mean, the, our work is just reflected in the. Products that guys presented in terms of the schedules and the detail on the projects on them.
Nice work, by the way. Thank you. Um, all right, technical committee?
Did not meet.
Okay. All right, general manager and district engineer comments. Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. All right, really quick, um, because uh, I, I know it's, it's late and people are starting to dwindle with their attention span. Um, so let me share my screen real quick, cause this, this I think gets to the hard, part of the matter we were discussing earlier and. I'll try and sustain my commentary, but at the same time. Um, okay, so. Can you see that? Okay, big enough? All right, so uh, again, these are the big tasks that we have before us. This is the same uh. Document that we presented to LAFCO, just so you know, so they did see very clearly, there's a couple of things. As you look over to the far right column under that fun, funds available, no column. Um, to do those things, uh, and President Kennedy, who did a fabulous job in front of LAFCO, uh, pointed that out to them. And you know, there may be some other ways to help make this happen. I think some things have been mentioned earlier this evening, you know. Waterboard, county, uh, other areas that we might scrounge up some funds to make some of this happen. So let me start at the top real quick. I'll spin through this, like I said, be quick, so um. Next month, the workshop, sometimes I suggest toward the end of the calendar year, another kind of real two eighteen workshop. Again, just bringing the community along, uh, and then prior to any sort of a vote, a true voting workshop. So people understand the options once again and have a chance to ask what the process is and we can describe again how the process works. Um, so here we are, city solving, technical study, design is now done. Um, project description, um, we're talking about doing in June, so that'll still be cute too. Um, if it slides out a little bit, that's okay. Um, based on that, um, you know, I'm, I'm heading out for a little bit, bit of vacation. But um, when I'm sitting around doing very little, I'm going to start drafting. Um, the RFPs we will need for the eighty percent design, kind of trying to describe that. I think it's a beneficial process for me to go to through, particularly before next month's meeting. Cause as you have to write all that stuff down, force you to think about it and, you know, top, it just helps you kind of sort things out of your mind. So I'm going to start working on that. Um, my recommendation for that is going to be that we, you know, do kind of a very uh, uh. Process heavy RFP process wherein we get it, we get it out on the street for a number of weeks. We contact uh, some firms, but we go out through something like the public process that, that allows engineering firms to see what we've got. Maybe give us bids. Keep in mind that uh, that's not a lowest bidder wins, it's the best quality. And, and the one we think we're going to get the best bang for our buck. So um, you know, we could go with somebody who we've used in the past, or we could find somebody new. We say, wow, look at them, let's, that, that sounds perfect. And based on their um, their uh, um, recommendations from other clients and such that we, we go with them. Having talked to a couple of engineering firms, the process that they'll need, they're going to need about six months to do the report itself, to go from a thirty to an eighty. Uh, is what they're telling me. Uh, so the reason this is three quarters is we're going to need a month or two to, on the front end to get things to the board. Get the contract approved, all that sort of stuff. So hence a, a nine month process. Uh, if it ended up being ten, it's not going to hurt the overall schedule in my opinion. If we go for a so local option, uh, we do have to talk more about siding. Um, I'm sorry, skip row twelve here, um, doesn't have a timeline to it and uh. President Kenny and I have, have kind of kicked this one around a little bit, um, you know. Uh, there may be ways to get us far enough along in the conversation. Uh, about what assessments like might look like. Remember, an assessment engineer is going to drive it down to your parcel and your parcel and your, you know. Each individual parcel, but there may be ways that we can talk about this in a little bit more generic terms. Meaning, um, okay, parcels that are a quarter of an acre or less, maybe you guys have some thoughts about how we're going to treat those, half acre or less. How we're going to keep those, so we can put, we could create categories to give people a sense of where they're going to fall without giving them, you know. Twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents, we can tell them, you know, somewhere between fifteen and thirty dollars, kind of a number, right? Similarly, um, uh, with the, you know, so that's the residential side. On the commercial side. Your, your board's going to have to make some decisions about this eventually, before we get to an assessment engineer anyway, about, okay. What are we going to, how are we going to treat uh, commercial versus residential? We can have that conversation while the eighty percent design is going on, while the environment is going on. Within commercial, you can say, okay, we're going to treat hotels like this and retail like that and food serving this way, right? Again, you're going to have to give that information to the assessment engineer anyway. And using that, we can then break that, those big numbers down a little further, so it won't be quite so, you know, well. Residents is going to pay less, commercial is going to pay more, you'll be able to give gradients a little better of what that might look like. Without saying, you know, business A is going to pay, I think, twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. You're going to say, well, they're going to be around this, right? Uh, and I think, I, I, as a, as a person who lives in the community, I was thinking about how would I think of that? And I'd love to hear your own board's input, but I think I'm okay with that. You don't have to tell me it's twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. If you tell me that's going to be between fifteen and thirty dollars, not seventy-five, I think I'm okay. Um, recognizing that, yes, you will tell me at some point exactly based on what the actual cost ends up being. What my, my actual cost is, so I think we'll be okay there. Let me, let me spin through this more and we can come back from that. Um, so eighty percent size is going on, environmental design concurrent, we have Padre. Uh, they are going to want to update the cost a little bit, their costs, their updated costs. Uh, remember, they said originally a hundred thousand, added another twenty-five thousand, cause it's been a couple of years since we first engaged them. Uh, financing plan, grants, all that sort of stuff, um, happening throughout. And then um, polling, as I mentioned earlier, I, I was talking to a polling firm earlier uh, today. Uh, who wants to think about how best to do a community this small. Um, I did give them some of the unique details of our community, you know, I, I broke down for them, for instance. When we look at our community, there are a few uh, large high benefit parcels. I'll use Maddie's as an example, because it's something everybody can tie their hat to, but put their thing their hat on, um, you know. We're going to have to talk to Maddie's, right? Where's Maddie's going to stand? Going to have to have that kind of, there are other property owners like that, we're going to have to get a good sense from them where they stand. And in talking to the poll, polling guy, he said, you know, you're probably better off just focusing on that group of ten or twenty people. Because, and he said, I don't know exact, the exact math for you, but uh, he said, you've got three hundred seventy-two parcels. Let me just for a minute say seventy-two of those are commercial and a hundred or three hundred of them are residential. He said, if two hundred residential people get together and vote no, will it outweigh those fifteen commercial properties? And I had to tell him, I don't think it does.
Right.
So it's really about getting the commercial folks not to belittle or discard or this, this.
Your vote is based on your assessed value, your voting weight.
Yeah, it's a weighted vote, right?
Based on assessed value.
No.
No, of your benefit.
It's a benefit assessment. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
The, the, the larger the benefit.
The bigger the vote.
Back on the system.
Well, I think you're saying the same.
When I just say I don't want to vote and then I can have no, uh, okay.
So, no, they're not saying the same people, you say assessment, I think.
I get no vote, okay, that's fine.
So, but the assessment comes down to your, like, benefit assessment units. And so if your assessment is two hundred thousand, or like, let's say my house is two hundred thousand, your house is one hundred thousand. My book carries twice as much.
Yes, but it's not your property tax assessment.
Right.
Here's a question. Has Maddie's received more benefit for it than the Fest Parker?
Probably because of the number of rooms.
Okay. I mean, so it's by, the, is there a matrix or a? Best practices thing in there for that?
This assessment engineer will more like, most likely, probably give you some parameters in order to be able to do what. Savage was talking about, in other words, making some decisions, so you know, how much later are we putting on residential, how much later are we putting on commercial? Are we, are we expecting commercial to subsidize the residential or not, or you know, those, those, those type of things. But, but I think the assessment engineer is going to probably give you those parameters before you. You, you start really crystallizing the way uh, you're going to approach.
If a single one has two houses or whatever that is, that's all put on the benefit.
What I'd like to see is other, what other communities have done. We don't need to do this in a vacuum.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not the first district to do this, so let's look at what best practices are for other. Whether it's a new assessment rather than rate increase and then.
So, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in for counsel here. You probably need to curtail the comment.
I know.
We, we didn't have this agenda is, I'm happy to agenda this for a future meeting, uh, where we can talk about it in, in detail. Um, but to just to plan to see, because it's been said in public before. Uh, prior assessment engineer, when he did the draft, said parcel size is the one thing that never changes. And you can go solely on parcel size, or you can include other factors. But his, his commentary at the time was, make sure it's things that aren't easily changed. So don't do things like, you know, um, number of bedrooms, because you can add a bed, right? Pretty easily. With the goals, um, got the month, so we want to have things that are like zoning.
Right, size and design.
But it's changeable, but, yeah, but things like, you know. Sprinkle our heads in the lawn, don't do it on that, because. So, um, I'll agendize it for somewhere like July-ish, because again, this is a conversation I think we can have concurrently. Once we've got eighty percent design going and we've got the environmental going. And I just bring it up to say, I think we can get far enough along that we can give people enough information by the two eighteen. That we don't have to necessarily have the finalized assessment uh, engineers report in hand and where to go.
And that's exactly why I made the comment about what they were seeing on your numbers. If it broke down evenly by three hundred and ninety-two. With the costs for the capital and the operation maintenance are pretty much ball right there. But what it's breaks down, when you get breaking it down to the individual cost, you can't look at that and say, well, that's what we're going to have to pay. And that's where I see the deer in the headlights looking some of the people.
All right, so um, moving on then, uh, with my report, so real quick, um, obviously met with Stan Tech to get him here tonight. I was continuing to refine the decision matrix. I am certainly working on uh, the presentation for next month. Uh, I, I promised to get it off to the waterboard, who uh, offered to look at the technical details, because they present that sort of stuff all the time. See if they've got some suggestions on how best to present it. Um, we do have a couple of community members in the past that have offered suggestions as well, so I'm going to reach out to them and see if I can't get them to review it as well. Just cause, you know, they're community members, right? They don't hear this every. Um, I mentioned earlier that uh, President Kennedy and I met with Dunn School, uh, again, just to recap that. Um, they are open to a discussion if we want to put a plant there. They have about five acres, I think that they can carve out for our use. Um, I wish the waterboard were still here. Um, you know, they're educators. And they're having to run a treatment plant and it's clear that, you know, it, it just, it's so foreign to them, they. You know, so then I think they would welcome the opportunity to have a, a real plant that's managed by somebody else nearby. And have a conversation with us about, hey, can we just run our stuff to you and not have these ax and ax things anymore?
Sounds like why some of us want solving.
Yeah, uh, exactly, right.
They want to tap into our one.
Uh, all the flyers and everything, uh, I'm going to be gone, so President Kenny has offered to, to get those mailed for me. They're stamped, they're labeled, they're ready to go. I'll do the social media remotely, I'll do the, um, the newspapers remotely to, to get us to that. Conversation with the city solving continue. That's my report. Yeah, funding line, I haven't changed in a week, right, in the city, yep.
All right, any comments, questions for Mr. Savage?
Just really quick on the meeting. Just really quick on the meeting notice, can we make sure if they're not on the list, I expect they are, but like Supervisor Hartman. Assembly member Hart, Senator Lamone, Senator and.
If if they, I have the box at my house, so if we if we don't, I can easily have an address for these folks.
I know Supervisor Hartman deals, but the others are not.
We need to get them like up to speed on where we are, because we're going to.
Yeah, yeah, well.
I've got some some blanks over there, and if you guys.
Yeah, I can contact Carvall's office, there's a PDF of this.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Send him a PDF rather than.
Okay.
You're going to do Carver?
Yes, sir.
I'll do Hart and Lamone if you want.
Who else do we need, Greg Hart? I can do him.
If you want, sure.
I'll take that one.
Uh, no, no report from the change your bike that I'm wearing, Doug?
No, it was a great meeting.
All right, there you come.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on, director comments, we'll just, how about we go down the line, Director Pharam? Director Parks?
No, I think it was a good meeting, and I think, yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's nice that Dunn could have available space, and they. Had a few discussions with Tristan, and I think he's good to talk to as well, so I'm excited to have him here.
Director Paulman?
Good meeting, thank you, Guy, for all of your work. Feel like we're gathering momentum and. Get moving, I'm going to bet on twenty six.
Thank you for everything, it was a great meeting, I think I've said more than.
Um, I just want to add really quickly on the Dunn meeting, while as general manager Savage, you know, there was definite interest in. And it was a really good conversation. Um, Guy also noted, you know, it's like between one and fifty thousand steps before we get there, there were some of the issues they brought up, so everyone's aware. Not quite a slam dunk, is, you know, they would have to get approval from parents and others, etc. Being putting a sewage plant on their school property could fly or not. Um, they did look at it as a potential opportunity for in integrating into their curriculum, which was kind of kind of nice, but. Um, yeah, still a lot of steps, and certainly the environmental impact, as they explore options, this is where I'm hoping we'll see more. We get a little more detail about what that might look like. Um, and then I just wanted to also thank everybody for allowing me to represent this board at the LAFCO meeting. It was actually a really good conversation, good questions were asked, and a lot of good discussion was had, there was definitely some good enthusiasm. Especially because we have a timeline, we, and and by the way, I committed that we're going to vote by the June meeting, so. We're going to vote by the June meeting, folks, so.
We are.
We are, that's what I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna vote by the June meeting, so.
Thank you. All your work, because there was a lot of groundwork going into that meeting as well.
Yeah, we met with, we met with Joan Pryor and made sure she was up to speed, but anyway, it was, it was, it was good. Um, so I'm betting on twenty twenty six as well, I'll take, take that with the. All right, if there's, let's see, nothing else, I think we are onto a German, so we would like to make a motion.
The German at eight thirty four.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do you have all the details there? All in favor? Okay, great, thank.